You're leaving and you bring donuts?
Uh, yeah. Not donuts, bun cakes.
Oh, nice.
Do we need to hide them somewhere?
Should we put it in the kitchen?
Oh, yes, please. We can do it afterwards and have a...
Hey.
Hey.
Welcome to Island City.
These are so much better, having them down a little bit lower. It's nice.
Yeah. Um...
Are they just leaning?
Yes. I was gonna say, don't think they're nice yet. Wait till you touch something. Um, these are all those same ones, so I didn't, obviously, I don't wanna read them all, but you can just say they were going with the record, I guess. Anyway.
It's very interesting that the comments on that are...
So, I guess there was a Facebook post that some people get into.
Great, he got a mischievous. That's great.
Sure, right.
Thing is, is that they're making comments about law and order, but really, it's not that. It's about ordinance, so... They're not understanding exactly what's going on.
So, there was, um, those ones, and then I didn't get any for the...
Yeah, they were all, these are all against LRB, so...
Uh, Bob's not gonna be here. He is in Ireland.
How can we have this public experience without Bob?
He told me he's gonna Zoom. I think this is you, right?
What's that?
I think this one's you.
Yeah, in the middle of it, yeah.
He's, he told me he was gonna Zoom. So, uh, Bob, and he's in Ireland.
Wow, okay.
He says he's going to.
We probably need to set that up, right?
Uh, it's being set up by Jen. She's in the mayor's office, running it.
Okay.
So... Uh, we kinda all took a little training.
Who's us?
Me, Cade, Jen, Marty.
Whole city?
So that there's more than one person that can run the show.
Uh-huh. Okay, good.
So, hopefully.
So as long as the training sinks in, then, uh...
Mm-hmm. And if you don't do it every meeting, then it doesn't.
Yeah, that's right.
That's right. Uh, what do we got? Ten minutes? Harvard.
Right, which is a little bit more difficult than somewhere where you can just say, hey, that's a industrial area right there, bam. We have a thousand acres out there, bam. We do, we do a, um, a freight yard, we do an air delivery prison, a lot of, you know, we're really all working out. Because we have a thousand acres that nobody else wants.
So is today, I...
Is it correct?
That's who I'll be today. So is today your last?
Your last, yeah.
Really, over the last years, I've come to these meetings, respected whether you were the chair or a member, you bring a lot of knowledge. Will not be the same without you.
You guys would do much better without me.
Oh, I don't think so. And I wonder if you would be willing to let me call you occasionally, just let you be a sounding board for my thoughts.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, you've got Mike on your team, so you should be set to go. And then this one about staff reports and having that more specified and...
What was your thought about what I said?
It's just a matter of it, you know, like you said, it always, you know, staff report, please suggest approval, you know, we don't, you know, we try to, you know, what, what have you done to get to this point?
You guys are early, so you can...
What boxes did you check to get to this point? That's really important for us, you know, is that, what did you check? Okay, utilities, grading, and stuff, and we don't care about that. Why are we giving grading plans if you're already checking through that?
And also, the issues when you were checking those grading plans, that need to inform our decisions.
Right. And I had, you know, I never did grade by no time, so I, I see the issues and complications, and I bring my own hearing. So, yeah, for, for, you know, feelings of, after about having talked to you, terrible grading plans, so...
Well, I could stop yourself on that, talk to the planning commission, but it's been a while, so...
Well, you know, just like, uh, just, just, Doug over here, he's, uh, he's been the, uh, you were mayor where?
Pleasant View.
Pleasant View.
Ogden.
You mean, if you're bringing the Muslims down here, you two, then, he's just north of you, right? Is that Pleasant View, it's just north of West?
Well, I, yeah, I was in central Ogden, but, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, I never had the pleasure of knowing Mr. Clifford while I was at the good, hello.
I think this is me, isn't it? Yeah, how are you doing?
Say hello, we seem to be opposite ends of the...
I know, I have to wave at you down there.
So, I'm coming over to say hello before I go over to the...
Condolences, that's just, okay.
Yeah, I'm over here in the corner, too.
How are you?
I'm well, how are you doing?
Okay. Did you have a chance to do the prayer and the pledge recently?
Sure, I can do it.
Okay, I think you're, we, uh, the rotation, I think you're the last one, not that, or not, so you can do it.
Okay.
He's in Ireland.
He's in Ireland?
Ireland. He said he's gonna Zoom in, but...
Wow, I'm impressed.
How can we have an LRB?
Well, after his fire with the Boy Scouts, after...
It's not working?
We knew he was committed. Uh, try it somewhere white. Try it on this. Nope, it's not. Have to switch it out.
So what are we supposed to do?
I don't really have a battery there. I don't think I need it.
It does have some?
Yeah, it's got a couple of batteries, but I don't either, not.
All right. Um, do you want me to take it and make sure next meeting it works?
I get diverted from showing these sparkly things. This isn't good.
Okay, do we get these, uh, are these working now?
You can just push right.
Oh, we got this one still, but we lowered it, huh? So it's not bad.
Oh, that's good. I do this every time. Press home. Oh, again. There we go, sorry.
There's a code?
It's all one, sorry.
Is it? Oh. X-Base, where is it on this one? No. Oh, yeah, they got it. Eight four one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah, if you had said zip code, I'd have been okay. Yeah, I know, and I was just...
Thank you, sir. This one's work.
What is it? Oh, a pointer?
Mm-hmm. Tried both directions, but... Um, I think Doug would like one.
Pardon? Yeah. We've got the same thing on both. Worked fine.
Yeah.
What do you got? Oh, but he's, it's giant.
Well, I have my heart, come on.
Okay, great.
Oh, okay. Did you want this one?
Sure.
Trying to blind somebody.
It's just that one? And... Upcoming events. Uh-oh, gotta refresh. Jen got it. And then there's your attachments, so you can...
Thank you so much.
Uh, screw it up, inside that one.
Is it touchscreen or not? It's not touchscreen. Okay, we have touchscreen here. Yeah, okay, gotcha. All right. This is a lot better.
I'm gonna try not to sleep yet.
Yeah, we can all see now over the top. This is good, I like this. Better. Especially with... Maybe we should just delay it until he gets back. Table until he gets home. Come on, Dave. You've already picked a fight?
Have you not seen him yet?
Yeah.
I'll wait to hear.
Doesn't work in the movie theater either.
Sharon?
Yeah.
Good evening and welcome to our regularly scheduled planning commission meeting for February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We would like to acknowledge that we have enough of our commissioners this evening. Commissioner Morris decided he needed to visit Ireland, and if he's on Zoom, we welcome him and all of his comments if it comes later. We will begin, would you take your phones and other noise makers and see if you could turn them on to silent or vibrate to keep the noise down? So it's not disturbing us. We will begin with the flag salute led by Commissioner Clifford. Would you please stand and join with us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our fall in heaven as we meet this evening in our planning commission, we are thankful for this opportunity that we have to serve and to try to protect those and set those boundaries that we have within our communities to provide the freedoms and, and privileges that we have as citizens. We're thankful for our freedom. We're thankful for all that our flag stands for and for brave men and women throughout our history who have protected that flag and given us the, the liberty and freedom we enjoy. At this time, we ask a special blessing across the world where fighting is going on for that type of liberty with the Ukraines. We ask that thou seek fit to mediate somehow the minds of those people involved to allow those freedoms to continue in the land. We're thankful for our citizens in our community and for their willingness to, to help their community and friends and neighbors. And we're thankful for all the blessings that we enjoy through that, that association here in our area. We pray for wisdom and knowledge as we go forth through this meeting and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
We will now poll the commissioners for any conflicts they have with tonight's agenda. Commissioner Clifford?
No conflicts.
Commissioner Robinson?
No.
Commissioner Guardiola?
No conflicts.
And I have no conflicts. Moving to item two, reports and presentations, tuner and applicant, Mike, your turn?
Yeah, it's nice to be liked. So this is, uh, Quavasa, um, phase two. It's in the middle of Cayante. It is, uh, zone RE forty-three with a lot averaging overlay. Um, Evening Star, um, is a minor collector road. It affronts property. The surrounding zones are all, also RE forty-three. Um, lot averaging was, is not required for this subdivision. Any questions?
Just the three lots that are in that element.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any questions? This is a presentation concept plan.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Guardiola?
Thank you. Mike, uh, in, I know this is a preliminary plan, but are there any geology factors, underground water, that would impact this development?
Typically, engineering looks at that. Uh, they didn't bring up that concern during TRC, so, um, uh, until we start getting our studies in the preliminary plan, um, that will start identifying if there are any of those concerns. Um, there was some initial discussion about drainage on the property, but, um, the developer is aware of it, and as he develops, um, based off of his studies, um, that will all be addressed.
Okay, and that addressing is looking beyond just the plots that are being developed?
Yeah, the water studies are, are, um, the surrounding areas until we get into our drainage systems where we have those sized already, um, the, the main ones, so, um, Chuck, Chuck has all that information, and he knows what can go in our system, where, and what needs to be retained on site.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mike, is there anything that we need to, uh, account for in this that would help us in the future when this comes back as a preliminary plan? Is there anything that has been in your mind that we need to keep in, keep in ours as we go through review?
Um, just, uh, the, um, the developers give a few options on where the sewer could connect, and other than that, it looked like a pretty, pretty easy, um, sub, subdivision to, to, uh, do at least the initial review on.
Excellent. Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Robinson?
Go ahead. Um, so this is very well, or very close to where the new reservoir's going in. Is that correct, as I'm looking at this?
That is on the map.
The vicinity map is there.
So we're up here, and here's the reservoir down here.
I'm looking at it on this one here, I, okay.
Evening Star is right there.
Yeah, Quavasa's way up on top there. Commissioner Clifford?
Oh, I was just looking at the other map that was included in it. It, it looks like, uh, around it, there are other, um, other lots that have already been platted. Uh-huh. So it appears like it's almost land, landlocked with other...
Right, and it's just the next step in Cayanta's development.
Yeah.
South of that.
Okay.
All right, then we'll move to item two B. Concept plan, report for Desert Cove subdivision, located approximately two hundred north and Quavasa Drive. RT Martin Utah LLC owner, Southland Ventures LLC and Parkland Ventures applicant. A lot of partners are getting involved there. Uh, how can we help them?
Okay. Um, Desert Cove subdivision is, um, zoned RE twelve point five. Um, it is located directly west of Arrowhead subdivision, which is zoned RE fifteen. The rest of the abiding property is not subdivided. To the north and west is zoned RE twelve point five with the land use of HDR to the north and LDR to the west. The south is not subdivided. Lots with single fam, family dwellings. Um, it's the, a lot of the area we're looking at on the land use map, um, right now, and, uh, um, those zones are RE fifteen and RA one. Any questions?
Just so I understand, right here, where two hundred comes across right here, center street's right here, we're right here, half green, half yellow right here.
Half high density residential, half low density residential, correct? Uh, yes, on the land use map, and the, there's a, three different zones in that area. With the RE fifteen, the RA one below it, and the R two twelve point five surrounding the rest of it, and the one subdivision. Yep.
Okay. Commissioner Robinson?
This will be considered MDR then, in between the two zones, correct? Twelve thousand square foot?
Yes.
Medium density?
Okay. So we're kinda splitting the differences, what we're doing.
Right, 'cause on, on the zoning use over here, it's all medium density residential, isn't it? And the pieces to the south are a little bit less dense, but it's medium density where the, where the blue is there.
Yeah, the zone here has already been established.
But follows, which is, there's no changes in the application or change in density there?
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Guardiola?
Thank you. Mike, uh, same kinds of questions, geological issues, drainage issues in that particular area or surrounding areas that would impact this site?
Um, not as discussed at TRC at this time until we get studies that would say otherwise.
I'll look forward to that, your report. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coombe?
Um, I'll put it up here so that the audience can see it, but in the far right-hand corner, that, that's not a large building lot. That will be a regional detention basin to handle water from not only this subdivision, but, um, from some of the surrounding areas. There's already an escrow open and pending. They're looking at possibly resizing the detention basin. The question is, do we close on the one property that was agreed to and then just purchase a different piece of property, a, a second piece of property, all within that big parcel that's showing there? Or do we actually enlarge the one basin? And so, um, uh, they're working out those details, and we should have the answers to that at the preliminary plan as to which way they wanna go, but that was discussed. So drainage has already kind of been taken in, into account by an agreement that was entered several years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Coombe.
Mike, as we look at this picture above us, the, uh, and the basin that Mr. Coombe talked about is that Lot Twenty comes down, and you can see the curb and gutters that follows down Quavasa Drive. Uh, will the city be required to continue that sidewalk and that curb and gutter as it comes down Quavasa Drive to, uh, continue the cross, the cross section of that main, main collector there?
Um, on the master, um, on Chuck's master plan, um, it designates exactly where that stops and starts.
Okay.
And it was just mentioned to the developer at that time, and that will be addressed also before preliminary plan. Exactly where that stops will be based off of the master plan for the area.
Okay. Yeah, that, that approximate parcel is about an acre size, so pretty good-sized basin for collection.
A lot of water.
Any water, yeah, there's a lot of water coming off of the Cayanta shelf coming south. It would need to be, yeah, it erodes and destroys a lot of roads in that area, so firsthand knowledge of that, so... But, uh, thank you for your time, Mike. Um, moving to item three, uh, public hearing and action item. Three A, discuss and consider recommendation of a preliminary plan for Black Desert North Estates Village subdivision. That's a mouthful, we'll get back to it. Preliminary plan for Black Desert North Estate Village subdivision. Located approximately Stone Canyon Parkway and Split Rock Drive. In-law LLC owner, Jared Manson is the applicant. Mike, help us understand what we're looking for?
Okay, yeah. Black Desert North Village is a mixed zone parcel. The west side of the project is buffering Padre Canyon. There's a strip along there that, when Padre Canyon was rezoned, they, um, set aside an area to buffer that neighborhood. That, uh, ma, is maintained as, um, RE thirty-seven. And, uh, to the north and southeast are zoned Resort, Resort Commercial. And to the south, it's zoned RA five and is separated by the, uh, future, um, Western Corridor, which is an undeveloped minor arterial route. The other road that borders the northeast is Snow Canyon Parkway, which is a major arterial collector. Any questions?
We, so we're doing a public hearing, so if it's just brief before we get to public hearing, if we, if we'll do discussion...
It's not a public hearing.
Oh, it just says discussion, I apologize.
Yeah, it's just discussion.
Uh, Commissioner Robinson?
Um, so I'm curious, on the, the entrance here where, uh, Western Corridor intersects with Snow Canyon Parkway, that is actually not on one of the roundabouts, is it?
That's correct.
That's in between the roundabout, okay.
Up on, past it.
Yeah.
I, I know Chuck debates when to do a roundabout and when not to do a roundabout, so we trust his judgment on that.
Yeah, I, I'm good with what he does.
He, he looks at the studies and everything else.
So, excuse me, Mike, is this the, is this then the first, um, official subdivision then in the Black Desert area that we've seen?
We've started, um, for the actual resort itself.
Yeah, but this is from a subdivision for homes and...
Yeah, this is the first, um...
Residential.
Residential, uh, separately owned, or separately plotted, um, subdivision for the area.
Okay, and these are all single, single family homes?
Family homes, right. Yeah, RE thirty-seven and RE, um, twenty, four?
Twenty, twenty.
Yep, RE twenty, yep.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Guardiola?
Uh, Mike, would you talk about, I'm assuming there's going to be a wall on the Snow Canyon Parkway side? What is the setback and the height?
On the construction drawings, um, they will show exactly where that wall is. We discussed about, um, the wall and especially the corridor in length, and there's a lot of different elevations there. And so the construction drawings, um, will have to be, um, aligned with the, the road, Western Corridor, which isn't completely designed yet. So you have two different elevations there that we need to correlate, and so, um, the construction drawings will be as, as per the zoning ordinance.
So my concern is that the setback on Snow Canyon Parkway, excuse me, be far enough that we do not continue the opaque luge that I, I feel we're getting on Snow Canyon Parkway.
Okay, so our ordinance states, um, that we have the step-back walls that have the different looks to it. Um, and I, and when, uh, engineering or public, public works reviews that, they'll make sure it is as per the ordinance, as, as the other subdivisions along Snow Canyon that are being installed. And that's, um, according to the last, uh, um, zone, um, zoning ordinance change that they had done for fence, for walls and fences.
Now, I'm looking forward to another change, thank you.
Um, Commissioner Robinson?
So it, it appears here that they've kind of tentatively put the wall or drawn the wall in, um, as I'm looking at this. Um, I'm assuming that's kind of what they've got delivered.
The black line shows ownership of that lot there, and so, um, the person cannot build past that.
The double line, so this line here.
Oh, oh, it's a...
That's what I'm looking at. It almost looks like they're doing something a little different on the wall, or what they... It almost looks like they're doing something a little different on the wall or what they've got planned, 'cause it looks like it, it, uh, meanders instead of the harsh setbacks.
Yeah, it will be as per the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
When the construction drawings are, are finished.
Okay.
Uh, any conflicts, any, with, uh, Commissioner Clifford?
Well, no, I was, I've been thinking, and you were gonna say something, so I, I'll ask my question now. I was, I guess I'm a little surprised, and I look at the, uh, well, I looked at the grading plan, and I'm not a civil engineer, and it was very complex. And I, I've watched it like probably everyone else as they've taken that, taken the upper crust off that a lot, in a lot of places, which I, they were allowed to do, I assume, because of the depth of the, of the lava, lava flow. But it appears like the only, uh, piece that, that didn't, uh, isn't usable basically the entire lot is a little, couple of little sections along that, the northwest edge of that piece of property. There's some shaded area there that's, uh, that's still, I guess, sensitive land, so I can't use it.
Yeah, there's a percentage they have to leave as per. The sensitive lands.
Yeah, thirty percent.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, all that, is all that off now, the over, the overlayer? Has that all been removed?
I, I don't believe in that area. I know, uh, the golf course area is being worked on, but I haven't seen that, that area. I don't think they're starting any construction over in that area, maybe just, uh, to stage some material that they've, they're moving around.
Okay, so I guess my, my question is, i- if they have it, have they taken off the overlayer though so that they know that the, the lava, there is a depth that they can't remove, if it's a certain depth, right?
Right.
They have to leave it?
Yeah, and then, a- as they're doing their subdivision, then, um, I believe Chuck's guys, public works verifies that, or, or we do, but we'll verify that it's done correctly.
Okay, but, but if...
This is my first sensitive land one, but...
Yeah, I'm, I guess mine too. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how that actually works if you buy a lot and it's got some...
I'll, I'll talk to Chuck and make sure that we're, we're verifying...
And you say I can't, I can't build on it, 'cause it's got a big chunk of lava in the middle.
Yeah, so I'll make sure we know who's doing that, but I'll talk to Chuck about it.
All right.
Yeah, for the, for the entire site, there has to be thirty percent, um, of some features that are left undisturbed, a total of thirty percent, so, um, you could have some here and there.
But we were told, I think, I think we were told by the developers that they were gonna go beyond that thirty percent, they weren't gonna actually use.
Well, if you count it as part of the overall lava flow, um, of, of, um, Black Desert, they're disturbing very minimal, uh, of the entire lava flow, so, um, I don't know what the percentage is of, of this one, of this particular portion of Black Desert, but, um, overall, there's, they're well, well within the requirements.
That's what I remember from their first comments, but, okay, thank you.
Black Desert has approximately six hundred acres, give or take six hundred thirteen acres, and about two hundred of those will remain as, as lava and lower, and, and open space and green space and whatnot, so they only use around four hundred acres of their six hundred for, for development.
Yeah, I, I know that there were said, side areas that were specifically for that, so, yep.
Do we have any concerns, any issues with this we need to bring up before we can recommend this to the city council for approval, or any conflicts, any, any changes need to be made? Just Commissioner Guardiol?
Well, I come back again to geology, and this is such a complex area, and we've been looking at it for a very long time. I guess my question is, are we finding any surprises in that geology that is impacting the build or damaging that ecology, water flow, et cetera?
Um, the, the sensitive lands addresses that by maintaining thirty percent, um, the geo, uh, on the structural side of things, I've looked at the geotechnical report, and they're, they are following the guidance as they're building the pad for the resort area yet. And so, um, we haven't come across any unsuspected water or anything else like that, so, um, there, other than maintaining sensitive lands and the beauty of the, of the lots in the surrounding area, um, nothing has come up, um, that I know of.
Thank you. I, I'm remembering a, a situation when I was on another planning commission where the geological studies were not done appropriately, and in that case, the whole mountainside was sloughing away, houses disappeared. And so I'm assuming that, uh, there was, excuse me, before this build started, a comprehensive geologic study of all of the land involved?
Yeah, yeah, so usually when they fail, they're done in the fall instead of spring. If you do a geological study in the spring, you usually understand the groundwater a lot better, and when they fail, they're due to, to being done at the wrong time, when the water levels and the aquifers are at the, the lowest. So I wasn't involved in the geotechnical report other than reading it, I'm not exactly sure of the date on it, but, um, um, we're watching for any different conditions during construction.
Where may I get a copy of that report?
Um, it will be in the building permit file, so if you want, want to, we cannot replicate stamped items, but you could come in and read it.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Guardiol, as you, as you look at this land use map over here, it represents the city as we tell. Tuacan Wash comes down here, it's a main tributary towards it, and it's just west of that piece that we're looking at. So majority of the water will come back here and come through the sit- land and head into Santa Clara, which is a main tributary of waters. And then the piece over here that comes down here is Sand Hollow Wash, and it follows on the border of Saint George and Ivans, and so that piece comes down here and goes through, uh, Saint George. The lava flow, which doesn't have a lot of penetration for any water that may get into it because of the basalt, it's a very solid system, eight to twelve feet in some places, but that basalt layer comes all the way through this yellow and then falls up into this area, and so this entire area is almost impervious to infiltration of water, whether it be, and if it's a standing wa- if it's a rainwater, it'd normally be on standing water, which you, and so it won't be an issue with infiltration of water below the subsurface to cause, uh, landslides or any kind of subservient, uh, geological issues.
Or any backup into other areas?
Right, as we get back up into the higher areas, it's all, it's a solid sandstone that has colloidal layers at the base of it, which are non, non-structural and very soft, uh, but the only landslide areas that we have are within the area of, uh, Centiary and the, uh, and the, in that colloidal area that's at the base of these solid cliffs below them.
Yeah, structural engineers get, get these reports and base their designs off of these reports.
I, I get to read them all the time.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Any, any changes before we head to a motion for, uh, city council? Okay, I'll take a motion then.
Well, Mr. Chair, I would...
Commissioner Clifford?
Yeah, I would, um, propose that we recommend the preliminary plan for the Black Desert North Estates Village Subdivision located in Snow Canyon Parkway and Split Rock Drive.
How do we recommend?
Approval.
Recommend approval, okay.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Clifford and seconded by Commissioner Guardiol to recommend approval of the Black Desert North Estate Village Subdivision. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, moving to item three B, discuss and consider final plat for Centiary Padre Canyon, Phase One C, located approximately eight hundred Tuacan Drive, Padre Canyon Resort, LC owner David Case applicant. Mike? You seem to be still standing there, so we'll let you, we'll let you talk.
Okay, so Centiary Padre Canyon is located south of Tuac- sorry, south of Tuacan, um, and it same, shares the same zone as Resort Commercial. It is, uh, surrounded by open space, um, to the south. The adjacent road is Tuacan Drive, and it is an existing minor collector route.
Commissioner Guardiol, this is where you asked that question, you've been asking three times already. This is exactly where they have geological rockfall.
I get on my list.
Major problems, yes. There's a, there's a large fence that's been put up, or required to be put up by the geotechnical engineer, AGC, that will require any large rocks or any debris that comes off of the mountain there to be stopped before it hits any, any residential or any commercial app, uh, buildings.
I appreciate knowing that, I'm thinking of, uh, over in Rockville.
Yes.
Where the boulders came down, squished the house, killed the residents.
Yeah, these rockfall fences are very impressive.
Are they?
Yeah.
So is nature when she wants to move.
So we, so we tried our best. We, we often lose, but we try to do our best.
Okay, well, that's good to know, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I guess, Mr. Chair, my other question is, um, the open area, um, that is across from this development, what mitigation is there to, uh, lessen any impact to the open area?
The one thing I know about the area is that you have the turtle crossings and the, the turtle fencing there. The, the open space, um, on the map in itself protects the area, so there's not gonna be any development or anything else like that. And so, um, the, the neighborhood, um, before my time has gone through all the reviews, um, for, for turtles, they know exactly where they are, and, um, Centiary's, um, aware of the rules that they have to follow, um, being in that, that turtle area. So, they, they've been permitted by BLM for, for how they operate.
Thank you.
Would you, would you like, Commissioner Robinson, did you, okay. Uh, Mike, I've noticed that in the past we've gone through this subdivision several times, is there a difference? This is a final plat of the south piece of the, of this below the hotel, but also next to where those other homes are already built, is there, is there a difference between anything we've seen before in this?
I'm not aware of any changes to this, we didn't discuss any changes, um, to this at all. There was a little bit of talk on the south end of the property about, uh, where the water's getting retained, but other than that, um, there wasn't anything that identified changes other than taking, resolving those.
So it's a retention pond rather than a detention pond, then?
They talked about how they were retaining the water rather than just letting it flow onto the ground or onto it. So, yes, in, in the construction drawings, it will show, show the retainage there.
Mr. Chair?
And Mr. Coombe?
I'm just gonna look out in the ov- audience at David, but in, on the south end, didn't that change a couple of times from a, um, a loop to a hammerhead to now what we see here? And so, um, it's very similar to what the, uh, preliminary plan had shown, and, and the configuration of it is basically the same. But as, as that takes a loop, um, right here, it's been a loop, um, with a hammerhead, it's, this is kind of similar, um, but that has changed slightly, so, um, that, that is one modification that I noted.
Would you please come and state your name for the record, even though Dale is...
David Case from Padre Canyon Resort. So, yeah, Dale's correct, that has changed a few times, but this final plat, um, is in line with the preliminary plan that was approved last year. That showed the, the loop like it is now.
Could you explain on Lot three, which is the southeast corner there, it has a, a widening or some kind of, looks almost like a turnout lane, can you see what I'm talking?
Yeah, it's for parking.
It's a parking element?
It's a pullout, yeah, our, our CUP doesn't allow parking on the streets, so intermittently we're gonna have little pullouts like that. In the notes, um, on the first page, there's a note that we retain eleven-foot wide easement along the front of all parcels.
Okay.
For parking purposes.
Excellent.
If we choose to put in little pullouts.
And that's what that is?
That's what that is, yeah.
It did look that way, so thank you for clarification of that one.
I have a question as well.
Clifford, go ahead.
This, this has been a phased development for some time, and, um, I've never been able to keep clear, uh, what phases were first and second, and where the hotels at, and other rentals and duplexes, and is there a, a master plan of the phases?
Absolutely, yeah, and that, that was part of the preliminary plan.
So many years ago.
This is the south portion of our property. The center portion is primarily comprised of the hotel proper, um, and then there's a northern portion that has more residences. The entire thing is a comprehensive resort.
Yeah.
But this area is, that we're seeing here is all private residential.
Is this the, uh, process that was originally planned in terms of the layout of the phases? This piece was the first to go, or...
Yeah, we've always focused on this southern portion first. I, I would say that's, even before my time, I think.
Yes.
It, it's always been the focus.
Yes.
So...
So this is in order of the, the way they were proposed?
Correct. We've plotted, I think, six lots to date, um, and this plats the remaining lots in the south loop, excuse me.
Okay.
Is the purpose of this plat?
The two that are existing buildings, the two casitas that were built or houses that were built before, are they just north or adjacent to this element?
Yeah, it's Lot thirteen that you barely see at the top left.
Uh-huh.
Uh, and then up above and to the left, just north of Lot fourteen there is where Lot nineteen is, which is built, it's just to the north of where your pointer, where the pointer is.
So it's a reference for where we're at, we're just barely south of that Lot thirteen?
Yes, these are adjacent to that, exactly.
Okay.
I, I offered in the past, but we'd, I'd be happy, we had the opportunity with city council to kind of present the comprehensive plan. If you'd ever want us to come to planning commission, we'd be more than happy to, um, spend a few minutes and answer questions and show the renderings and the overall project.
I was there for when you presented and, and did all that application at the original time, and so, uh, I, I believe that the commissioners are re- readily available, but, and also be excited about hearing more information about this Centiary location.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that anytime.
I think I'd be good, because it's been a while, and, and...
Should I coordinate with Sharon to...
You can come through, in the office anytime and just see them too.
Yeah, all that display is that...
Can you, yeah.
We, we've got a lot of new planning commissioners, so I think it'd be appropriate to put it on an agenda.
Let's do that.
Yeah, we'd, we'd love to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any concerns, any conflicts? I didn't see any when I went through the final plat, I just did the line work, but, and the questions I've asked tonight, but they've all been answered to my folly, so I'll take a motion. Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah, I, uh, I motion that we, for approval, was that correct?
We, I move that we approve the final plat.
I move that we approve the...
Final plat.
Final plat for Centiary Padre Canyon Phase One C, located approximately eight hundred Tuacan Drive, Padre Canyon Resort, LC owners, Dave Case applicant.
It's been moved by Commissioner Robinson and seconded by Commissioner Guardiol to approve the final plat for Centiary Padre Canyon Phase One C. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Uh, moving to item three C, public hearing on proposed amendments to the non-residential table of uses to clarify definitions on classes of use. Dale, is, is this your presentation?
Yes, although I, I did kind of slip in a, um, a residential, um, thing on solar, that was passed by the city council, and so I just wanted, this is just kind of a note to send this on to our codifier, um, so that, um, I don't forget to make those changes, but, um...
Thinking about item seven?
Yes. So, just in summary, in residential, um, if it's rooftop, it's allowed, um, at least by the zoning ordinance in all residential zones. If it's ground-mounted, it's resid- it's allowed in all single-family residential zones. But for the non-residential portion of the table of uses, um, we had, I had put on as a discussion item to remove golf course, um, from the table of uses due to water concerns. And there was some discussion about whether to leave, um, some types of golf courses or... or that there may be annexation of property. And I, I guess I kind of side with Pam on, on this one is that this is not etched in stone. Uh, this is a fluid document and if we did annex property, um, then we could consider, uh, whether you wanted to add golf courses or if, uh, we got a lot of water, which I don't foresee, but, um, then maybe we could allow something like that. If this doesn't apply to, um, something like miniature golf, that, um, that would have to have a separate, I think, definition, but, and then similarly with car wash, we, the question was, do we, um, what's down at Lightfoot's is a legal non-conforming use in any event, which means they can continue that, maintain that. Um, they can't add on to it if, if we said no more car washes. The question is, do you, is that type of a car wash okay as opposed to the automated, quick quack, tag and go type cargo, car washes, um, that we're seeing pop up everywhere? We also needed to clarify the definition of hotel because what was shown, um, as single-family residential, uh, at Centiaire is really part of a hotel system. There's lockoff units and you can rent the entire building, but it all goes through a central booking company. It's all part of the hotel. When he talks about the central portion being the hotel, those are units that, um, are retained in ownership by the hotel group. These, the outer portions, the outer dumbbells, if you will, of, of this development, um, will be sold to private, um, parties. And so they might choose to live in the main unit, rent out, sign up some of the lockouts. But it all goes through, if, if they choose to rent all or any portion of it, it has to go through that central system. So it's all part of a, the hotel. So it could be a Marriott booking system and, um, to the consumer, they wouldn't know the difference. But to us, we don't favor vertical hotels. We favor horizontal hotels. And so our previous def, definition talked about it wasn't a hotel unless there was a lobby and you kind of went up from there. And it didn't really recognize this horizontal type of hotel use, which Centiaire is doing. Um, Black Desert's doing kind of a combination where they have their main hotel has some vertical, but a lot of it is the horizontal type as well. So we wanted to clarify that. Item four is just bringing forward, uh, to the table of uses itself, uh, the clarification that was made in the alcohol licensing ordinance, that previously it was a, a club, which really referred to a dining club. And so there was usually food associated, um, with the consumption of alcohol. And then a fairly recent change was you had to choose if you were going to either be a full-service restaurant or just a bar and not have the food component of it. We have, uh, all of the licenses in place for the restaurant use, um, including where a hotel can have room service and that type of thing. But, um, it was generally felt that for a, a, a true bar, um, under the, under the club definition, it would have been allowed in a resort commercial or a C1 zone. And I mentioned, well, would you want to see a true bar, inebriated people coming out and trying to negotiate the roundabout at Canyon Crossings, um, after having a few? And, um, and then the second worst intersection I could think of in the valley or in the city would be Second East and Highway 91. And that's Zone C1. So again, would you want somebody pulling out onto Highway 91 who's had a few? And so for just a true bar, that left us with commercial light manufacturing. Now, we also brought forward, the table of uses used to just refer to chapter four, um, which was the alcohol ordinance. And I can't remember which chapter it was, but for sexually oriented business typically referred to as SOBs. That, so referring to those chapters, um, that type of business was only allowed in commercial with light manufacturing also. So I thought it was, would be more appropriate to put X's in, in all of the other zoning categories and just put a class five use under commercial with light manufacturing. Similar to that, another, another form of expression, um, is, would be tattoo parlors. And so, um, what zones would we want those in? Would we want those in resort commercial, again Canyon Crossing as an example? Or C1, uh, Lightfoot's, um, down on Highway 91 and 200 East? Or should those be, um, in commercial with light manufacturing as well? And so that's what we're asking the public to give comment on is, uh, where are these uses most appropriate? What zones? And then we'll pass that on to the city council and when they make a decision, we'll pass it on to our codifiers and we'll have, um, our table of uses updated, um, once again.
Okay. Thank you, Dale. That is quite succinct, so, um, uh, we will open up the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, one thing.
Commissioner Clifford.
Before we open it up, uh, is a, could you, uh, give us a little more feedback on what a class five uses is and why that's more important? I think that would help people to understand.
Yeah, good point. Thank you. So a class two would be, uh, Mike is the building and zoning administrator, uh, can issue that permit. Class three, the planning commission would issue, but there would be no public hearing. A class four, the planning commission would issue after a public hearing. A class five, the planning commission holds a public hearing, makes a recommendation, and then it goes to the city council for final determination, but no public hearing at the city council level.
Okay. Thank you.
So as, as we look at this, uh, item four, who is a class five, item five is class five. And, uh, I assume that item six would be a class, we will have to use the designation there, class.
A tattoo parlor?
Yeah.
Is it a class five considered?
Um, that'll be up to you.
Yeah, they're asking for it.
As, as we, as we stipulate, yeah. We'd like to hear those.
Let's have a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Well, yeah, excellent. All right, then we'll open the public hearing for this item. If you'd like to make a comment, come here to the microphone, state your name clearly for the record and let us know where we should place these items and how we should proceed. Thank you.
CJ Koharchek, 109 South Puerto. I would like to speak up in favor of items one and two. I think it's a lot easier to take something out of the table of uses than to explain to some future developer why they can't put in a golf course or a car wash and hope for the best in terms of rain. We live in a desert and we need to really embrace that fact.
Mr. Chair, before you close the public hearing, we, this is hopefully being broadcast over Zoom.
Yes.
Um, so we can check with Jen and see if there are any hands raised on this item. Jen, are there?
There are serial voices that comes over the mic.
We hope. Not always, does it work? Uh, Jen, we can't hear you in here, so if you're.
Can you send a runner?
Uh, if you're unmuted, um.
After all this time, we can't do Zoom?
It was not part of the specifications despite someone calling a meeting in the old city hall to make sure that there were no problems with Zoom and somehow Zoom was omitted. So we're piecing this together as we go.
I do not have anybody that has raised their hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. We, we'd come, come to the microphone.
Yeah.
Barb Pridey, 572 South, 170 West, here in Ivans. I also support removal of car washes and golf courses because of the water.
Excellent. Thank you.
Are we just discussing number one right now?
We're discussing all of the points that we talked about, one, two, three, four, five, six. So we're talking about everything in the table uses that Dale presented.
Okay. Um, Nancy Martinez, um, and I support removing the car wash and the golf course also for water restriction reasons. I also think that it would be smart to classify, um, the SOB and the, um, tattoo parlors as a number five.
Class.
So we can maintain a little bit of morality in our community. Otherwise, it will just gradually go into something less.
Thank you. Anyone else for this item? Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing for item 3C and move on to item 3D, discussing, consider recommendation on proposed amendments to the non-residential table of uses to clarify definitions and uses, class of uses. I'm thinking that, uh, we, we've already talked about this, that car washes and golf courses are using up too much water, or at all. Commissioner Clifford?
Yeah, I, I guess I'd like to challenge a little bit the car wash one because I think that a lot of studies have shown that, uh, the recycle, recycling of the water and car washes, which is what's required, actually results in people using less water than if they were home running it into the street. So, um, I, I don't know. I'm, I guess, um, I, I think that, uh, we have a passion for having clean cars in St. George and I think, uh, I, I think it's a, we, I, I would like to see a little more data on that one before I guess I would make the decision, but what I've seen says that they're actually more efficient, so. Golf courses, uh, I, I think that is a, a huge use of water. And, uh, and if we suddenly got abundance, I guess you could, I don't see any land in the city, by the way, that, that you're gonna put another golf course anyway, so it's kind of a moot point as far as I looked at the, the map, but. So my only issue would be on the car wash part that, uh, you know, they may actually be more efficient with the recycling, which they're required to do.
Okay. Commissioner Robinson?
Um, on the, um, on the golf courses, I guess my concern would be on that one is, um, because there's so many different types now that getting into like top golf, is that gonna be included in that? If we, uh, remove that, that they couldn't do like a top golf? Do you guys know what that is?
No, that's a driving range. That's not a golf course.
It's pretty much, yeah.
So we could.
Would it fall under that?
We could do a different definition, um.
Not that that's gonna happen here, but that, I don't see us having enough room here for a full, another full-size golf course, but I could see something like that maybe down the road.
Just as a driving range?
Yeah. Okay.
Commissioner Guardiol?
Yeah, um, having come here all of my life, as I watched, starting in the eighties when Green Valley was created, Bloomington, et cetera, and the ecosystem change because of the golf courses. Um, I, I think that it's wise that we don't put this in the table of uses. If something changes, then we could add it, but I'm in favor and I agree. One of my questions that I wrote on this agenda item was, um, where on the map exactly would we put one? So unless we add and then maybe think about it at that point, I'm in favor of removing that. As far as the car washes, I, uh, Commissioner Clifford also would like to see, are they really more water efficient? But even then, how many do we really need?
Well, it's, I, it, we are a capitalist so, society and, uh, you know, if the demand is there, someone's gonna provide it. I guess that's, uh, that's why I demand.
Well, I, I would lean to remove that as well, um, to be more in keeping with our environment. We talk in the general plan about building houses, building structures, doing things that are indigenous with the environment. And, uh, I think that needs to apply to all aspects of our uses in, in the community. So I would be interested in removing that one as well. If I may, uh, go down to number six, the tattoo parlors. When I look at this, first I have to say that folks who get tattoo are better people than I. I don't have a high enough pain threshold, so I respect the art that is created. I, I don't see a tattoo parlor having the same impact. It's service people go into the building, they deal with the pain, they come out with their bandages and so forth. I've had students who've had amazing tattoos. So I, I would see more possibilities of where that could go. Certainly not where an SOB would go or a full bar establishment. Those have more significant impact to the flow of what goes on in a community. Thank you.
What about the class? What are you thinking about?
Do you know which class you'd like to place that in?
Right now, the suggestion there was class five, which is the most difficult.
Right, and I, I would say a, a class four.
Public hearing before, pub, the planning commission and, and recommend for approval?
Yeah.
Class four would be decided by the planning commission.
After a planning, class four hearing.
Class five would be public hearing by the planning commission, but final decision by the city council.
Okay, so four is, is decision here.
It's a little stringent.
Where five is decision, council.
Okay.
So you like a four?
I would indicate that as I've, um, where I have seen tattoo parlors, I would, I would say the zoning was likely a C1 in what we would designate. And, um, so, um, I know people that go to a nail parlor right next to a tattoo parlor, uh, in Santa Clara. One's considered a form of expression, one maybe more of a form of art, um, I suppose. I know, I better quit while I'm ahead. But they're, but they're both right next to each other and what I would classify as a C1, there's a bank in that area. So, uh, I have seen them in C1, um, unlike, um, your typical, these other uses that we've talked about.
Chair?
Uh, Commissioner Robinson?
So, um, a lot of the new beauty techniques and some of the women here can maybe attest to it. I don't know. I know my daughters and stuff get it. Our tattoos now, eyebrows, eyeliners, all that kind of stuff are tattooed. How would that play into this as far as those are concerned? Because that is, that's hugely common and just a regular beauty shop offering those type of tattoos.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Yeah.
I think that's why I didn't recommend a zone or a class.
I could, I could, uh, that, the reason I say that is I think, uh, maybe the, uh, commercial, or, uh, excuse me, um, uh, resort commercial, because I could see, you know, some of these salons and stuff being inside some of the resorts, some of the boardwalks, I think, uh, black. and stuff being inside some of the resorts, some of the boardwalks, I think, uh, Black Desert's doing a boardwalk, I don't know if they're gonna want something like that, but I, I don't know if you're gonna separate that, you know, do we talk about a tattoo parlor is different than that? Or you, you understand what I'm saying?
Well, they are becoming more commonplace than what they used to be. Uh, historically, maybe it was as, uh, what someone in the audience described, um, today, more and more people have tattoos and, and a lot of very good people, as, as noted by Pam, have, uh, tattoos. And, um, and you see them, like I said, in, in general commercial areas, more so now than, than any part of a, seedy part of a city, so.
Yeah, it's becoming more mainstream.
Yeah.
Do we have a semi-part of this?
Commissioner Clifford?
Yeah, question. The, uh, are, are we recommending on six though, what, what are, uh, it says we're, are we to pick a class of use then?
Yes.
Yes. Recommend.
And a zone.
Okay, same, yeah, alright. Well, I, okay, I agree that they're not a, um, they should not be classified in the same as a sexual oriented business for sure, or, and I think the full bar services, I mean, a full bar is a different animal than the restaurant as well. So that could, should be a different, uh, a different zone as well, a different class.
And that's already been done.
It's already been done.
By the City Council, but I only compare tattoos with SOBs for, that it's a form of expression and therefore a form of speech that may be protected. And so we, we would have to designate someplace in the city where they can go.
I'm fine with that.
Um, it, uh, just recently, the, uh, American Civil Engineering Society had a conference down at the Marriott Hotel and talked about, with all of the civil engineers in the area, had the gentleman Zach Renstrom, who runs the Conservancy District, came and did a presentation for all of the, all of those that attended. Uh, he gave a description of the water that's coming through the Colorado River Basin into the Lake Powell area, based on, uh, that information. Uh, he, I don't know if it's, he's given a percentage here, but, uh, the river used to, when it was first, the, the dam was first built and, uh, the lake was first initiated, the, uh, flow of the, of the river was at approximately a hundred and three percent. And over the last several decades, it has declined to the point where it's only running at seventy percent. So the main problem with that is that the, uh, requirement for release of the water downstream. The agreement to release a percentage of the water downstream was agreed upon at the time that the, the dam was created and initiated. And the agreement that the Nevada, California requirement, the volume, regardless of the percentage that's in the water, in, in, in the river or in the lake itself, the amount was agreed upon back then and so that amount is still released out of the lake. So whether or not we, it's not a percentage that's released, it's a gallon that's released. And so even though that reduced is almost thirty percent reduction, we are seeing that more reduced from our lifestyle rather than from their lifestyle. So I would say that anything that conserves water, which the Conservancy District has done with the several dams proposed in the area for recirculation of water, reuse of water for irrigation and for other uses, is exceptional what they've done. But, uh, if it comes to the ability that car washes can, you know, recycle and regenerate, you know, reuse that water, I don't see that happening at Lightfoot's. Uh, I'm assuming that goes.
But that's a, that's a, that's already there, that's done.
Correct, correct, so.
And so basically, the, uh, the zoning now for a car wash could be that it's required to have recycling water, uh, so that's easy to apply.
Okay, so a- as, as that comes up, golf course and the use of that much water doesn't seem feasible and there's a.
And we don't have a place.
There's, there's not a place for it, right? So as I look at number one, the element of removing that from the table of uses sounds appropriate.
Right.
Um, the item of, item two, clarifying the car washes to be, uh, do we want, are we just clarifying the two differences there Dale? Or we just, are we representing that it'd be removed from the table of uses?
Well, it could be either, or it could be something like Lightfoot's, which is more of a hand wash system, or it can be the full automated system where you just pull your car in and, and it does the rest. It pulls you through and spits you out clean.
Do we know which one's more efficient? We don't, we don't have any study.
Depends, depends on the user at Lightfoot's.
Right. Um, as I look at item three, I would expressly understand that hotel needs to be more horizontal as this area has a height restriction and we have the, and the, the view corridors, which we can't protect, but we talk about it all the time. And then we have the, the night sky that we would like not to be blocked by or emboldened by large lights above our head to block out the stars, that's not a good idea, but, uh, I think that hotel needs to be, uh, is it, what is the recommendation on hotels, Dale, to, to just stipulate the horizontal move?
We're just gonna allow them?
Well, I think we would remove the requirement for the lobby as a must. I mean, it, it could be a vertical hotel, um, up to a certain height. We, we use height as a limitation.
Right.
But we need to make sure that it does include, that the broad, the definition is broader and includes the horizontal, so, um, we would need to, uh, put this together in, into the table of uses and then let you review it one last time before you, uh, perhaps make your recommendation to council.
Mike?
If I remember correctly, Dave articulated the change four weeks ago. I think that, um.
You have to remind me now.
Yeah, so in the minutes, four weeks ago, I think we, we transformed it to a vertical hotel and the language, and you guys put the periods where you wanted it.
We did do that, that's right.
So, um, I think that follows the same intent, that language is, is recommended.
Thank you, Mike.
I kept remembering it last week.
So as, as we proceed through then, we'll just look at that information that you stipulated as you read it again. Dining club definitely needs to be in a class five conditional use, uh, SOB as well in the conditional fi- class five.
Now dining, did you say dining club or bar?
Same. Or was anything that has alcohol?
No, the bar.
No, this is where we're splitting this, right?
Yeah, dining.
I apologize, yes.
Dining club's already, um, or it's already been split into full restaurant and so they can choose that. So that's already in the, in the.
So this is just bars?
It's, it's, uh, classification is specified, so all we're doing is specifying where does bar go and what's its classification. So right now, it's, uh, commercial with light manufacturing and class five is what I'm hearing.
Yes, I, I would approve of that. As well as the sexually oriented business would be in that CLM, as, as you've stipulated here on the paper, in the class five. I like your, your comment about tattoo, I didn't think about the eyebrows and, and the other elements that are tattooed as the ladies do permanent makeup. Haven't taken myself to the parlor recently, but.
I don't know if that's allowed, but there's a gentleman-like comment, I don't know if that's allowed.
Um, we.
It's been closed.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Um, and then, uh.
It'll go to City Council.
And then the solar, that ma- that makes sense to have the elements of there. Uh, do we want to, is it stipulated to have a class and location or is, is anything, is that part of the table of uses?
On solar?
On solar.
It's already done to you, it's in a different ordinance, I just noted it so that the codifier.
This is the residential, non-residential part of that?
Yeah, but I would note that, um, there will be another po- chance to make public comment at the, um, City Council because this is a zoning text amendment. So when this comes before City Council, there will be another public hearing held.
So as, as I understand, we're against the water usage for a golf course and, uh, perhaps make, making a, a removal of the table of uses of golf courses. Car wash is on the fence?
Uh, I'm in favor, keep eating.
I am. Keeping car wash?
Yeah.
I, I would like to see the data, uh, are all of them now required by standard to recycle? And that if, in fact, that is the case and we do keep it, that there be a stipulation in the ordinance that they have to have the recycling. Frankly, I, I just assumed they go, but I'm open to see what the water usage is now.
Okay, Ms. Chair?
Commissioner Clifford?
Besides, I would propose that not only do we have them, uh, looking at it from a recycling of water, but we need some information for how much water is even used with the recycle, because the car does go out wet and it does, they, that you don't get a hundred percent back every time somebody drives through. And, uh, so it'd be interesting to see.
How much the makeup water.
How much they really do and if it's still a lot of water, then yeah, we probably should say no. Except what happens then is we have Mr. Joe Public with his hose out in front of his house doing it, so, and that's all going down the drain.
Right. Okay, uh, then on item three, um, clarifying that we remove lobby in, in the text and the, uh, the text changes that Commissioner Coulum has brought before us, that makes sense. So it seems like we are in agreement on all of these points, um.
Okay. I'll, I'll put it together in a, in the table of uses.
Okay.
And, um, let you see how it actually looks before you make your recommendation.
Excellent.
So what did we come down to on tattoos? Tattoo parlor, it, it's a legitimate, uh, use in any kind of a zone that would be similar to a beauty shop? Is that kinda what we're hearing?
I'm hearing C-one, class four.
C-one, class four, yeah.
Okay, okay, alright.
As we look at C, so, so Commissioner Clifford, as we look at C-one, C-one is down here by the, uh.
Is that the only C-one?
Uh, this is, this is four hundred and this is two hundred.
Yeah.
But there's a small piece of that is, uh, town, that's storage units, it's already built. Uh, do we have the, uh, is that C-one there, Mike? That's where the, uh, that's the, um.
University.
Medical Center.
Medical Center.
And then, but, uh, yeah, the majority of that, so, yeah, the only C-one really that is developable is around the university as well as down by the, uh, the highway. I don't think, uh, oh, yeah, CLM was over here by the Fire Lake area, but that's on the, uh, other ones, but yeah, C-one. I think C-one, class four is a good recommendation.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to comment on item number seven. I recently, excuse me, went on a field trip with some residents and, uh, as we were walking around this particular parcel of land, as we were finishing, there were, were some ground-mounted solar panels that surprised me at how huge they were. And in this particular site, they had a lot of open space to put them, but what concerned me was if I, for example, wanted to put them in my backyard with neighbors on both sides, that seemed pretty invasive and I know we've discussed the solar panels before, but that was the first time I had seen a ground-mounted series of panels that was huge. And if I lived there, I would have, that wouldn't have been my favorite thing to look at.
Mike?
The City Council debated, um, that topic for, uh, two, two sessions in a row and I think we came to a pretty good, uh, clarification on, um, screening. So, um, that was addressed and all this is, um, notes on it. So the City Council has passed what will be in the zoning ordinance and they did take in con- consideration to the same concern as you have. So how, how the ordinance is written now, um, it talks about screening and, uh, trying to mitigate the, the looks of, of a solar ground mount system.
That would be quite a screen that could be almost as intrusive as the solar panels, but you know, we take baby steps, right?
Property rights were, and, uh, of neighboring properties and individual property rights were both addressed in that and considered.
Thank you.
Just as a, Commissioner Clifford? Pam? Just as a, a comment, if you look across the street, if you took all those panels and put them in your backyard, you would have a lot of backyard taken up. I mean, the, the roof mounts, uh, we, you don't realize how many panels it takes, how much space it takes and if you're putting it somewhere in a yard and it's small, you'd have to have more, more property than most people would.
It's why the roof is efficient use of, of space.
That's right.
Um, um, as, as we go into that then, it seems like we're in agreement for most things that, uh, Dale can put together as a ordinance form and we can, uh, make our recommendation on that.
Yes.
So do we need to ma- a motion to table, the table of uses?
Yeah.
Table to table.
Yeah, table, table.
I move a table to table.
Second.
Then moved by Commissioner Clifford and second by Commissioner Guardiol to table item three D. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Moving to item three E, public hearing on proposed amendments to exterior color regarding light reflective value. Dale?
Actually, this is Mike.
I, I, I know, but, uh, be, before we get into, before we get into Mike, um, can, oh, I have, I have, I have here pages and pages of comment by email for us. I really appreciate all, all the voices that were heard, most of them as, uh, this is Mashawn Robinson, she says, "I think the residents of Ivans should be able to use whatever coloring and lighting on their homes that they would like. I believe that is a succinct statement for every page I hold here." But as I, as I would like to specify the, this, the amount, what we're, I need to get my words together, but I would like Dale to talk about House Bill eighty-two, is that what it is?
Eighty-three?
The one that removed the requirement?
Correct, and so the difference between what we're doing here and what is allowed by law is, Dale, would you please help understand?
So, uh, last year, the legislature passed a bill that said, "We can't regulate, uh, design requirements." That included, uh, exterior colors, that also included height, um, unless, and it gave an unless, there was a development agreement. And so, um, we have said that every subdivision, uh, requires a development agreement so that there's no misunderstanding as to, um, what's going, going to be built there. But, um, these issues, um, if a developer or owner chooses, um, are negotiable. And so, uh, we present a form, a standard form development agreement that says you will comply with the design guidelines since they're in our ordinances. But if the property owner, uh, developer, uh, wants to negotiate some, something that's in those design guidelines, um, then they're free to do so because of that law that was passed by the legislature last year. So, um, so we try to, um, still apply and, and, and live by our design guidelines, but, it won't be the case every time because the state has usurped our power. But it's given us that exception and so that's kinda where we start with is, you know, what, what part of our design guidelines do you want to negotiate? And, and a lot of times, they don't. They like the way the city has developed, they like the look of, um, you know, instead of long, um, unbroken roof lines, um, they like the breaks in, in those, they like the architectural features around, um, windows or, or, um, porches and, and things that, you know, make the building look interesting, um, let it have some shading effect and, and take away some of its massing perhaps. So there are a lot of developers who have, who, who agree with our design guidelines and that's the way they like to. and that's the way they like to develop. Now there, there may be some, and we're getting more from up north, that come down, and they will probably negotiate some of those items away. And so we'll, we'll try to explain why those have been required in the past and what it has done for our city. But I think exterior colors, with LRV as the measurement, has created a lot of confusion and, and a lot of angst in the, in the community about, and yes, I do, or I still remember a little bit of German, so I know that means anger, and anger is the right word. Not just fear or concern, but that's, that's anger. And, and so the question is, is there a better standard or another standard that maybe is better than the LRV standard? I think it was Commissioner Morris that always said, within the guidelines, within the range of LRV allowed by our ordinance, is a John Deere green tractor color that you could have your house, and who wants to live next to that? But it's, it's within the LRV, therefore it's allowed. And, and a lot of people would say, well, I take issue with that color, but I don't take issue with some of the other colors that, you know, today it's much more popular to have some lighter colors and, and even some darker colors. So I've heard the, the word chroma come up, I'm not, I'm not the expert on, on this area. But that's, that's the question. If within our design guidelines, you have building material color, and then you have light reflective value as your standard and measurement, is that the correct standard and measurement to use?
Mike?
This is a public hearing coming up?
Yes, but Mike is, so yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this brought me for you to clarify the ordinance, and I guess we're gonna do that one way or the other. I, I gave the whole chapter so you, so you could read it in context.
Right.
And so there's different requirements there, like how, how it matches the neighborhood or, or the surrounding areas. And sometimes I go out on a cloudy day to look at a, at a house, and it totally looks completely different on a cloudy day than a sunny day. And it's, it's a really difficult way, if you look at two different days, one day you might say, yes, this is exactly what Ivans is intending, but look on a different day, and you really don't understand how that was ever approved in the first place. So I think whatever we end up doing, hopefully clarity is, is what we get out of it. And so that's why I brought the ordinance to you in the first place. I lived in an HOA one time that didn't like a greenhouse, and they made them change the greenhouse. And then five subdivisions later, back in Phase 6, somebody did the same color, but now it was in. So they, the HOA at the time liked it, and it, it was basically the same color. So as people change, we see things differently, and more of a solid ordinance is helpful. And I, I do think that we do have a solid ordinance. It's just when you have two different people look at it, they can interpret it differently. And so it is a good ordinance, we're just looking to improve on it and maybe make it easier for everybody to see the same thing.
Thank you, Mike. And, and more importantly, make it easier for the billing official to give us consistency in the ordinance by using the requirements labeled out, you can see on the screen. He has A, B, C, and D to verify that the colors are agreed upon under the conditional use, the subdivision agreement that Dale talked about. So houses that are existing now do not have a restriction on color based on House Bill 82. It's only the houses that are agreed upon by the subdivision developer under this subdivision agreement. And they'll be tied to that agreement and tied to that subdivision and negotiated through subdivision to subdivision. So that's a point, but A, B, C, and D are the elements that Mike uses to verify that the house is underneath that agreement and coincides with those agreements. LRV, as you've heard, is one of those choices under B. Shall we use it? Shall we not? Shall we modify it? Shall we leave it the same? We would like to hear all of your comments about how you feel about that item. So I'll open up the public hearing and take the time, come up here, state your name for the record. It looks like there's several of you, so keep your comments brief, and we'll get this done. The time is yours.
Good evening. My name is Mike Hugo, live over on Mesa Vista. You said just a minute ago, or someone up here said, "The state just usurped your power." I don't think the state usurped your power, I think the state protected our freedom, trying to protect the rights that we have to put what we want on our house. The next thing he said, "We're trying to look for a different way to control it. Let's not use LRV, let's look at another way." Once again, why are you trying to control it? I don't think you have the right to. I think more and more, our rights are getting eroded away. We can't have too many lights, we can't have this. What do you take away next? Every time we come, more laws, more regulations take away more of our rights. I'd say, get rid of it, just get rid of it, get rid of it.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we should retain these guidelines partly because if it's all.
Will you pull that microphone down to your voice? Your, your.
Thank you.
I think we should retain these guidelines because without guidelines, you can end up with anarchy, and that's not a good thing either. Also, if a developer comes in, generally, it's been kind of my observation, that, that subdivision, there is some sort of a contract, an HOA, and generally the HOA, in order to maintain consistency and keep an attractive neighborhood, has some sort of an agreement such that certain colors are allowed, and then the residents can choose within that framework. And I think that's quite appropriate, because there are some people that don't get it. And I know where I previously lived, there was a bright blue house, and it was a bit of an eyesore in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Please, come up.
My name is Dan Brown, and I believe what the gentleman just said, we should have the freedom to do whatever we want with our house. It's our property. I've come to these meetings a lot of times, and it's still the same, it's their property, they can build whatever they want. To me, that's, that should be allowed within certain parameters. I lived in Emerald Springs, which was an HOA off of Dixie. There, it's a little different, because you move into that area, your house has to be white. And if it's not white, well, they'll put a lien against your house, or they'll paint it themselves. So that's different, you already know what you're getting into. But when you move like Vista Mesa or whatever, they have houses all different colors, doesn't bother me, but I think everybody should have the freedom to do what they want, because like everything else, you start with that, and then where does, where does it all end? Next thing, you'll be coming into my house, so we don't want that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Some of you know me.
Just come up with the microphone there a little bit.
I'm Chase Hamblin.
All right.
So just a quick story, real quick. I only, I rebuilt a new home just up the street up here, and I only rebuilt because the city did not take proper measurements to make sure my neighbors' cats, they continued to destroy my modular home, went underneath it, my kids started getting sick. I lost a daughter six years ago from CDF because of it, the city still did not do anything about it. Anyways, I had to rebuild, I got crap over and over and over from the city about the color of my house, the pitch of my roof, the roofing material, all of it. And I got approval finally from your old code enforcer, not Cody, the guy before him.
Mike Rodriguez.
So I got approval, he told us that we couldn't paint our stucco white. So we agreed upon a really light gray color, and then he retired, and then the new guy came in and said that we could not do that color any longer after we had already painted the house. So they were not even gonna allow us to move into the home, and then they gave us stuff, crap on painting our trim white. They told us we couldn't do our roofing material because it was too shiny, it is a black, no gloss, so it's flat. And then the lighting as well, they told us we couldn't do the lighting, but we have improved our property more than what it was. It was a double wide rundown, beautiful home, it's worth eight and a half, you know, 850,000. Good, good looking home. So yeah, I think to a certain standard, we should be able to do what we want on our property, we're improving the neighborhood, which is what everyone wants. And I had to get up here and make this argument, I just lost my dad a month ago, and he dealt with this, this caused more stress on him than anything, and that's why I'm up here making this argument, is on his behalf, because of the crap we went through. And that's my argument.
Thank you.
Barb Pridey, when you started this discussion, you spoke about the ordinances for every subdivision with height, exterior colors, you know, and the new law in 21 by the legislature. What happens to the developer in a subdivision when they do not follow those ordinances? Because, you know, I'm, I'm hearing that the public, you know, things will happen, but what happens to the developer if a subdivision is developed and those things are not followed?
Is that a, we're not really a question-answer system, it's a public hearing. Mike could help you out with any questions you have about that, about enforcement or...
I'm just wondering if it's different for the general public than it is for the developer?
No, he'll, he'll, he'll try to answer that question after the public hearing is closed.
Lance Anderson, 469 West Fitness Way. I agree with you, Dale, on usurping our authority. We've moved it from the city government to the state government.
Excuse me, are you speaking as council member?
Oh, that's why, give my address.
Stipulate. Okay, so stipulate, okay. Not as council member.
Nope, I'm not speaking, I'm speaking as a member of the community here in Ivans for umpteen years.
Okay.
And we moved our authority when this gentleman said, "When you move into an HOA, you have certain rights." Well, these ordinances have been on the books for, I know, I think it's 2008 or something. And anyone that moved in the city after 2008 agreed to those ordinance. That was our, that's what our community said we wanted to live by, and that's what we've been living by. It isn't something new we've just been promoting. It's been going on for, yeah, there for a while with the different building inspectors, things got out of, lost a little control here and there. And I don't think we're given, it's a right, I've sat on planning commission for eight years, people coming in saying they want their right to do what they want, but then over here, they want the city to solve their problems for us. Well, my neighbor's got these big trees, my neighbor's got his house pink, my neighbor's got trash out there, my neighbor's this or that. You know, we, one hand, we want our right, on the other hand, we want the city to take care of it for us, because I've sat here doing that. So, so I believe that the governor has taken, has usurped our authority as a city, because the city is, is a group of people that come together like a family, and they agree on certain rules and regulations to live by. And so I don't think someone can just come in and take that right away, because that's how we've done our investment, that's how we've done our design. I mean, you can go over there to a little house that got this big house built by it, it ruined its investment. You know, so there is rights and rules to keep uniformity, you know, and, and our city has had these rules in place for a long time, and we've been, and it has grown. When I moved here, there were 600 people, so I know what Ivans has become compared to what it was. And I don't want to take away, I'm a person that respects the older neighborhood, I respect it for what it is, people moved here for a purpose, and I want them to continue living. Where his house is, you know, that's, that's something that's, we, no one's trying to take away those rights. And I think one other thing that's important to realize, when we're talking about this, LRV is not the ordinance. That's one little piece of the ordinance. We keep saying the LRV ordinance, no, that's not what we're talking about. It's not the LRV ordinance. But that LRV ordinance is not just for the developer that comes in, wants to build a residential home, it's for the guy that wants to build townhomes, condos, apartments. So that's why the ordinance is important to keep in place. We don't want this gentleman or anyone here wants to go do something in their house, we don't have control of that, right, anymore?
That's right.
I don't think we're trying to do that. I think we realized that a long time ago. What we're trying to do is, is protect the bigger items and continue as I've seen in the last 18 years Ivans want to grow to. I mean, I wanted to put my truck yard down here where Anthem is, you know? Back in the day, they almost let me. I wanted to build a RV park there. Back in the day, they almost let me. But can you imagine that today? Along Highway 91, the salvage yard was there. Nobody here remembers that, but you know what? We, they wanted to increase it, but you know who helped get rid of it? We bought them out, started to buy them out, and then another guy could step in front of us and pay them more money. Or we'd have big salvage yards along Highway 91, and the Highway 91 corridor plan come into play. And so I don't think we're, you know, I believe Governor usurped our authority, and I think he did take away what we as a community wanted at one time. We do have new people moving in, but I don't think that should take away what's been in place for a long time, so, thank you.
Thanks, Lance.
Dan Brown, 485.
You want to pull that down to you?
Dan Brown, 485, Preah Drive. I love Ivans for its uniqueness, and I look at this wall, and that color palette represents Ivans. I look at communities that are beautifully developed like Kienta and Trotta, everything is appealing, it blends with Ivans. And I personally wish common sense could prevail and prevent something really crazy going on in a beautiful community. I want to keep Ivans pretty, I love it here, and I thank you for all you're doing to keep it that way.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rachel Christiansen, I live at 328 East, 855 South, and I am against all of this. If it was in place before, people, it's all about different people and their perspectives and what they're changing it to, and the control level is getting out of control. The, telling you the things that, colors of, on your housing, it's not, we have rights to our property. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Oh, yes, Dale, is there anyone?
Jen, is there anybody on Zoom that want, wishes to make a comment?
Well, there's a recent training, so.
I don't have anybody that has raised their hand.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Is there, is there any more comment tonight on this item?
You don't have to.
I'm Dusty Saxton, 258, or, 258 South Main, there we go. I would have to say that we, that I agree with getting rid of it. Um, I would have to say that we, that I agree with getting rid of it. Is that what we're, we're trying to do? Or anyway, I would think, I would say that. We, uh, we probably ought to not go into, into a relationship with, with new homeowners or, or developments, expecting that they're gonna do something that is gonna be harmful and, and with the developers. I think they're in business to make money, not to, uh, just throw it down the drain. So I think we ought to get rid of it.
Thank you.
I really think there's a delay on the Zooms. We just need to wait like a
Yeah, there is.
full minute.
Do you have some sock puppet you can do? All right, then.
Here, before you close it, I, like you, received all of those letters.
Okay, Commissioner Guardiol would like to read a letter.
Yeah, there was one individual who asked that this be put into the public record.
Yes, please.
Dear Ivan City Planning Commission, as an Ivins resident, I am opposed to the strict enforcement of the city's current light reflective value requirements. And believe these regulations should be abolished and not expanded. Having served on a planning commission for a city much larger than I, than Ivins, I am well aware of the issues and pressures faced by planning commission members. And I appreciate this opportunity to share my feelings regarding the L R V regulations. My reasons for opposing the L R V regulations are presented below. L R V regulations are apparently prohibited by Utah law. These regulations are an overreach of city authority. Because Utah prohibits these regulations, enforcing the L R V regulations exposes Ivan City and its taxpayers to costly litigation. City officials should not bow to the wishes of a small vocal minority who are seeking to impose their will on the entire community. But rather consider the desires of the majority of Ivan City residents, even though they may not be nearly as vocal. Neighborhoods which have a majority of residents desiring, quote, light pollution control, unquote, may impose L R V regulations or similar restrictions on their neighborhoods by initiating a planned unit development governing structure or a homeowner's association or some other similar organization. Restricting exterior lighting on homes, streets, intersections and commercial parking lots, as in Kienta Development, creates public safety and security issues. Since I will not be able to attend the public hearing in person due to a previous commitment, I am hereby requesting that my email be read out loud by a member of the planning commission or staff and entered into the official public record of this public hearing. Thank you for the opportunity to express my feelings regarding L R V regulations. Respectfully, James H. Reynolds, thirty-two forty-one, two hundred tenth Street, Ames, Iowa.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Robinson, you have a letter you need to read?
Um, yeah, so this was an email. Um, just for reference, um, I went through all the emails that I received. All of them were for some level or reason to abolish. Um, this one in particular, um, was because they couldn't be here. So again, they wanted it read. I'm not able to attend the public hearing on March fifteenth. This is by, um, excuse me, Cherish Spencer is who this is by.
Cherise.
Cherise.
Sorry.
Uh, regards to L R V, but I wanted to, you to know, I am against L R V requirements set by the city. According to Utah state law that was passed and signed by the Utah governor on five twenty-eight twenty-one, cities, counties and counties, in that bill, there is, excuse me. I'm reading too fast. Let me slow down. In that bill, there is a section ten dash nine A dash five three four, regulation of building design elements prohibited. I decided to listen to the minutes of the legislation to find out why this bill was created and passed. Rep- Representative Paul Ray stated, city and county should be charged of safety of homes. Goes back to personal property rights. For example, a homeowner wants to paint their home, uh, the same color as a neighbor down the street that got theirs painted a while back, but now the city does not allow that color. The city should not, should not do that. It is for the homeowner to decide how to style homes on their, and their homes. For example, what type of rock, stucco or siding, and, and how much of it. Again, cities and counties should absolutely worry about safety when a home is built. One of the big pushes for a bill like this seems to be about the cost of construction for homes. As you know, cities and states are all struggling with keeping up with costs of homes at more moderate levels. They are hoping by not having cities regulate the styles of colors and types of building materials, costs can go down. This bill was intended to help cut, cut some costs of the property owner to actually have property rights. We should not zone people out of their city. They cannot tell you what color your house has to be. You cannot have stucco siding brick or those types of things. Ray said, this was quote from Ray, as long as it means safety and health codes, the rest is your choice. The last is, I agree with Ray, Representative Ray, and feel like the city should not require L R V. By doing so, it is op- an opinion of overstepping their authority. The color of my home does not have anything to do with the safety or its health. Again, thank you, Cherish Spencer.
Is there any more comment for this public hearing? Uh, they will close the, uh, the public hearing for item three F. Oh, I don't know, discuss, sorry.
Three E.
Three, I apologize. Three E, thank you. And open, uh, and discuss, uh, three F, discuss and consider recommendation on proposed amendments to exterior colors regarding light reflective value. The, the reason, and I apologize that I, I didn't stipulate this enough. The reason I had Dale talk about House Bill eighty-two is that everyone has the right to their own color, their own ability to paint their house, whatever color they want to. Everyone, according to this legislation by the government. Every letter, every item, other than, I think, um, Nancy here and Dusty talked about personal private property. I appreciate that wonderful comments. But the two talked about development agreements and going into a development with those stipulations on it. If you're, my mother had a trust set up for her money when she left. It was stipulated that half of the money went to her children and half of her money went to another resource. I am bound by that agreement and her choices. I did not make the choice. She made it for our family. And so our family is regulated by that agreement. Each development, each developer has an agreement with the city and everyone living in that subdivision is bound by that agreement with the city. And on coming into that subdivision, I hope it's in the C C Rs. It's stipulated that the colors and elements in that subdivision are stated and rectified in this document by the city or in that document stated to by the city and that agreement that's there. Tonight, we're trying to find out if we should keep or modify item B in this document. Should we remove it? I've, I've heard remove. Love remove. Love remove. There's love remove. I don't, I don't know if I said that.
I think you said that.
Okay, but, um, I'm trying to make, as, as a planning commissioner, we're trying to make this community work really well together. And this building, the staff, the city manager, the mayor, the council, you know, the T R C, everyone that's working to make this community work together. We're trying to make that easier, just trying to make them easier. And if Mike brought this to us and said, hey, I'm not being able to understand what this L R V and how I can make it, you know, he's talking about two different times of the day. He sees it differently. And Mr. Saxton's brought it to the point that, uh, he, he's the one that brought in the, you know, John Deere Green and showed us how it was in compliance. But, but he had, he had a, a, a paint palette. Last time we talked about this, it said, this is in compliance and this is not. And they were, you know, it was, it was obnoxious of what was available and complied and what wasn't that complied. So if it's something that we would like to keep or remove based on our, your comment as well as the discussion tonight, that's, uh, that's the main element that we're looking for tonight, right? Okay, so now that I've got my soapbox, we are, just, just, just to make sure that we are reeling this in, Bob's not here, so remember that we are discussing whether or not to keep, remove, modify, L R V for developed agreement developments in the future, nothing in the past, right? Nothing on private citizenship that has all of that right right now. Everyone has that right because of House Bill eighty-two. How should we proceed in the future with development agreements? Commissioner Robinson?
Okay, I appreciate everybody showed up tonight. I am absolutely in agreement. I would love to X this out of our agreements altogether. Now, having said that, my, if you're, we talked about, um, Mr. Brown talked about living in a P U D in, uh, in Saint George. If you're moving into a P U D, you know, when you move into that P U D, that there is a governed color that that P U D is. We have Padre Lakes right here in town that every house in there was supposed to be white in the beginning. And then the exterior houses, they changed the color and the exterior houses are a different color. That was their requirement as a P U D, Planned Unit Development, which has their own governing rules that move forward. I don't have a problem with that. That's what they want to set up. That is awesome. And you know, as a homeowner, when you're going in there, that that is what you're gonna do. When you're talking about people that are moving into general subdivisions, like I just did a few blocks over here. It was not a P U D. It was a subdivision that anybody can buy into and there's no, um, uh, monthly fee.
HOA.
Thank you, HOA fee or anything like that. And they were regulating what we could do on the exterior colors of our house. And in fact, my first color was approved and then not approved and we had to alter the color. Um, the house next door to us got approved and then ended up having to paint the house before he could sell it. This is ridiculous. I, it's, it's personal preference. And, and if you're buying a home within an open area of Ivins, it should be your choice about what you do with your personal property. And it should be taken out of those agreements. And I don't, I do not, I love Dale. Dale is awesome. He does a great job. My anticipate, my thought process though on this is, is I feel like this is an N run around usurping the state law. To be able to put this, and, and we say we're not forcing them to do this. But what, um, contractor is gonna come in here and put up a stink over color? He's got millions of dollars on the line. He's gonna sign whatever the city wants him to sign so that he can get dirt, dirt, dig in dirt so he can start getting some money back in his pocket. It's not a fight he's gonna put up. So this is about the citizens putting up the fight to say, look, this is our right. And this is what we want.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yeah. Uh, a couple of things. I, I think we have some real inconsistencies in, um, the way we're approaching this. Because, um, we talk about these agreements, but we, we use the word negotiate. Negotiate doesn't mean that I'm gonna be forced to do it. And, and I heard a comment, you know, they can negotiate out of these situations. Well, it, it's not a standard if it's negotiable. It's something that, uh, the, uh, a majority may like, but a minority may oppose. And, and if I can negotiate, uh, then I can get whatever I want as long as I negotiate some, some kind of a deal. So, and that's the way we've left it. And the trouble, the trouble we have here is when you, when you have a law, you have an ordinance, you have to have a way to measure it. And the measurements can't be negotiable. Uh, they gotta be, they have to be something you can look at and say, this meets it, this doesn't. And thirty-eight, okay? You know, that's the number. Is that a good number? No, it probably isn't. And the fact it's negotiable makes it even more squishy. So I think we got, we have a real problem in that, uh, we're trying to apply something that, number one, fits our general plan. Uh, the general plan is the holy grail of a city. It is what the city, the vision of the city, what we want it to be. And, uh, the problem you have then is how do you take that vision and quantify it? Because a vision oftentimes is kind of amorphous. It's something that everyone looks at and, and I see this part of the vision and I think that's really important. Someone else sees this part of the vision, they think it's important. We have the night sky people, that that's the most important thing. We have the people that have color, the color issue, that's the most important thing. We have people that want lighting so that I could, my kids can play in the backyard at night. That's important for them. So we have, we have all these things that, uh, are hard to, they're really hard to quantify. And the only way that we have done, most communities quantify that and allow it to happen is they have subdivisions with HOAs or some kind of a planned unit development, call it whatever you want. It's a housing area that all the people that buy into that agree that I'm gonna live by that set of rules. And that rule, those rules are binding within that. And you know, when you come in, that those rules are binding. Can you extend that to a city? No. And that's basically what the, the governor said. We can't extend that to an entire community. We, it, it works for a small area because we can choose. I can choose to live here and I can choose to follow those rules. And maybe I can get those rules changed within my small community, my little neighborhood, my little HOA, whatever you call it. But, uh, I make that choice, a conscious choice. Uh, the problem we have with a lot of people though is they move into an area or they, they want to move into an area, or they do move into an area and they don't know the rules. They come in and they haven't read the HOA, they haven't read this, and they want to change that. And then they get, they get upset because they can't make that decision. But at some point you draw, you draw the line. And I think we, we draw the line by saying within community, within our local subdivisions and, and, and developments where we do have restrictions, restrictive covenants that people accept when they buy into those areas, then those you can, they can bind the color and, and, and make it part of their, the rules within there. I think the city in general can't. I think all we can work on is the fact that we have a general plan that says we want the area to look and, and blend with our environment. And we've had people sit here and say, well, I want a black house because we got lava full. I want a red house because we got Red Mountain. I want a white house because we've, we've got the, all the white area up in Snow Canyon. I can't argue with those. I mean, they've, in a way fit the, they fit the description of blending with the community. So I, I think that I, we're trying to measure something with a tool that doesn't work very well. It's not very accurate. Uh, if John Deere Green works and some of the other blending colors that look really great to me don't work, I, I, this isn't the right measure. I think we should just drop it and let the issue be with color palettes on local communities and HOAs. So that's my stand.
When you say drop, you mean remove?
L R V, remove.
Thank you. Commissioner Guardiol?
So I want to thank you, Mike, for sending that document, which I have read before, but it was nice in this context to read it again. And I also, with Sharon's help, thank you, Sharon, pulled up the minutes from, from this body. It says January thirty-first of twelve, but I'm wondering if that's twenty-one. Uh, all of the minutes that refer to L R V. And after a while, I started to create, uh, a, a flowchart. Trying to keep track of everything that we've gone over again and again. And, and I had the honor to attend a lot of these meetings. It was nice to revisit some of this again. And so it seems to me that we're looking with L R V at one leg of a four-legged stool. So we have the document up there. Section one in chapter nineteen, section one, nineteen, one oh three, sub paragraph five. Section one in chapter nineteen, section one, nineteen, one oh three, sub-paragraph five, talks about building material colors. Says excerpt, exterior building colors that respect and enhance the natural tones of the southern Utah environment shall be used. Okay, so there are four elements and you can see them up on the screen. Minimize impact, blend, do not contrast with natural desert colors. LRV that we all know and love or hate, one way or the other. Color intensity and brightness, chroma shall be in a range from very weak to medium weak. And finishes, matte finishes are recommended. So it seemed to me that we're asking the wrong question. That what we are looking at is where are we as a community and what matters to us? And that's where the general plan comes in. And I believe that people own that which they have a voice in creating. And the commission is in the process of reviewing the general plan. And I think that is something that needs to be done and encourage citizens to come talk. A general plan should never be a document where some people believe that other people created it. If other people created it because I didn't have a voice, that was my choice. So that's one of the reasons I sit up here is 'cause I wanna voice in what happens in this amazing community. So I would pose before we decide on LRV, the one leg of a four-legged stool, that there are prerequisites to answering what we do. First of all, we complete the review of the general plan and do outreach the community. And we come together respectfully and we listen to each other and we disagree, but we have a common criteria against which we make the decisions. If we don't know where we're going, any road will take us there. But as we come together, we have the opportunity to say we care about the quality of life in this community. Maybe we redefine what one nineteen, one oh three, sub-paragraph five looks like. But democracy is not a spectator sport. And we come together and I'm hoping that, uh, Mr. Coulum, that we can decide when we're gonna start having our public meetings and get people's voice. So prerequisites, we complete the review of the general plan with the community's active involvement. Secondly, as I read through the documents or the minutes for all these meetings, I saw, and it's been discussed again this evening, ensuring the capacity and capability to enforce subsequent elements of sixteen point nineteen point one oh three, sub-paragraph five. And every community is going to have, um, variation in the way things are, uh, people are held to them or not. And so I think we as a community need to do some homework there so there is consistency. And then the third prerequisite is to communicate. And Mr. Coulum, you've done an amazing job as I've read through the minutes. I remember sitting there listening to you say many of these things before. But to satisfactorily address the governor's director, directive on who we are as a community. My sense is we have not effectively communicated to our citizens any of this. Now, again, democracy is not a spectator sport. But if I choose to be the spectator, or because I have small children, or I work out of town, or whatever reason, I'm not aware of what's happening. Part of that's on me and part of it's on the community to find more organic ways to communicate. I believe there's a way we can come up with a common standard here. Because what I respect is every one of you in this room cares about what happens in this community. Huzzah. Thank you for being here. So I would like us to table this item until the general plan review is complete so that our recommendations align to the city council with the revised general plan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Total. Commissioner Robinson.
Just a similar battle on that. First of all, that's why we're doing the, the public carrying is to allow input. By the way, if, if you don't already know, um, I was the author of a email that went out to, or not email, excuse me, a, a Facebook post that went out to get people aware of this. I stopped counting at twenty responses, I don't know how many's on there now. Of the twenty I had respond to me on this, one was in favor of keeping it. All the rest of them wanted it gone. So we are listening to the community. The community is responding to this. We are hearing that. And, and as we talk about what we want as a city and, and even reading in there what it says about, um, not in contrast with the city, that it blends with the city. If we look at our beautiful wall right here, which was supposed to be a representation of all the colors within our city, we see white and we see black as well as all the other colors in there. Neither one of those colors fit LRV. You couldn't do your house in those colors. It's impossible. And, um, my, uh, I, I, I know the Browns here, I used to live next door to them. Can you tell me what the color of the ground is around your house? And the rock that you had, that's around your house, it's white, isn't it? 'Cause I excavated a ton of dirt when I had that house built there that was all white rock. So you cannot tell me that white is not a elemental color of Ivans. And black, right on the other side of it, because all that is, is lava rock. It's black. So there is no color within the spectrum that isn't a natural color of Ivans. Now, we may say green isn't because we live in the desert. And most of this green that we've put here, we put here. It wasn't here before. But still, it's not my decision, or should it be the city's decision to tell you you can't have green on your house, or white on your house, or black on your house? That is your decision. And I, and, and we talk now that the fact of it is, is this is only new, this agreement is only for new people coming in or new subdivisions coming in? Exactly what do you think's gonna happen when all this is filled up and they wanna start going back and getting the rest of the community on board with this? It's gonna retrofit eventually at some point. That's my opinion. That is not, that is an opinion. Not to mention where it leads us. If we're worried about house color, what happens when the gravel in front of our yard doesn't match the LRV that they want? I have brown gra, or yeah, brown gravel in front of my home. The neighbor that built next to me put bright white gravel. I don't particularly care for it, but it's his house. I don't care. It looks great on his. But again, that wouldn't fit the LRV if we're gonna start tagging all of these exterior elements. It's, it's gonna turn into a nightmare. And I just, I, I think, um, I think we already know what the community wants. And I think that we have been, um, dancing around this for a long time and the state has told us what they want and we've danced around that. And so I think it's time we get rid of it and move on.
Mike?
Can I just quickly answer the question on enforcement?
Yes, please.
Just so we understand, the International Residential Code says when I have to issue a certificate of occupancy. That, with that said, when it comes to this, what contractors, when they bring me a problem saying, hey, what about these other houses? And then why do I have to obey this? And I just look at them and I say, did you sign a contract to obey this ordinance? And they're like, well, we're competing against the other guys and we have to sell our houses just like they have to sell their houses. And we would like to be able to do the same thing. And I say, once you sign a contract, then you need to obey that contract. And so the enforcement is through the contract that they have signed. That, uh, I'm, I'm telling them that they have to obey what they agreed upon.
Okay, Mike, stay there. I think that what Commissioner Robinson has been just talking about is in the future. If a subdivision, an HOA, a, a PUD is required by that development agreement to keep their colors within a certain specification that they've negotiated with the City of Ivans and a future resident or a secondary or third owner of that same home inside that subdivision chooses to disagree or not follow the contract set apart for that HOA-PUD agreement, development agreement and color their house or change their, their, out of that agreement, what ability to enforce that agreement?
They'll may answer it better than me, but I believe it's stuck, it is combined with the property. That it is an agreement that stays with the property because it was developed underneath that agreement.
Bill?
A development agreement is very similar to an HOA document, CCNRs. You have some subdivisions that choose to have an HOA and some don't. The council has said that every subdivision is to have a development agreement. What goes in that development agreement is up to the person developing that subdivision. Just like if they were putting together CCNRs for an HOA. I've heard it said that, well, but people don't know, um, that that's what they're getting into. Well, it's recorded, it's part of their chain of title, just like CCNRs are. And, um, I read my documents when I bought into my subdivision. It, um, it doesn't have an HOA. It did have CCNRs by the time, or a, a development agreement, I think by the time it got to my phase. But, um, uh, it's, it's a contractual agreement that is being enforced. It's, um, so the governor recognized that there could still be contractual agreements for individual subdivisions. It could be a development agreement, it could be CCNRs in an HOA. We don't allow any more PUDs. But they, they created, in essence, their own zoning because of their agreements. So, um, it, it's still what the community, um, wants, but it's, you got the spokesman, the developer, who has a vision for what that development's gonna be. And that's what they agree to in a development agreement. And people who buy within that then are subject to that agreement. Same thing with CCNRs. If, if they choose to have a homeowners association, now a lot of them try to avoid a homeowners association because people don't like paying dues. And so they use a development agreement to say, well, here's, here's basically the same thing as what CCNRs would be in, in, in HOA. But we'll just do it with the city and, um, it's not citywide, it's by subdivision. And you can keep or throw away light reflective value. I personally don't care. It's what, it's what, um, you recommend, um, to the council and what the council ultimately adopts, um, that, um, we have to follow. And so that's not my role to say, um, whether, um, building material color should be specified, um, uh, or not in, in an ordinance. It's just a simpler way to say what are our design guidelines. And they're set forth under a chapter of the zoning ordinance that say, design guidelines. It's true. But the governor signed, did away with many of those things. And so many, many people would be upset if, if you had a four-story house built next to you. Technically, uh, everybody has a right to do that too. Because height was, was listed as a design guideline that is no longer there. And, um, it's just a simple way to reference in an agreement for a particular subdivision. And the developer can say, well, I want height restrictions and here's how, here's what I want the height to be. Here's my vision for my subdivision. If you went to one of Lance's subdivision, it, the height would be less than twenty-five feet, which is specified in the zoning ordinance. It would, they wouldn't be nearly as high. But they can, they can specify their range of colors or say there is no limitation as to colors. That's why I say it's the developer that, that says what do they want for design guidelines? Our ordinances kind of are a cafeteria approach as to what would you like and what would you not like in your development agreement? And, and they can pick and choose. A lot of times, um, the developers we deal with have built here in Ivans and they like the way that Ivans has developed. And so they, they prefer to just follow the, the guidelines that got us to where we are. And, and that's their choice. I'm not, I'm not twisting anybody's arms. In fact, it's, it's not usually me. It, it just comes up in a, in a technical review committee meeting. And we say, well, there's gotta be a, a development agreement. You want the standard design guidelines? You got any problems with, um, any of these areas? And they say, no. Then, then I do a standard development agreement, let them look at it. They have a chance to come back with changes to that, um, standard form, but it's a starting place rather than having them send it out to an attorney and, and pay the attorney to, to do a draft development agreement. We, we start out and we just say, well, here's what our standard form is. Are you good with that or do you wanna change anything in it? And, and sometimes we go back and forth. Sometimes those development agreements, um, get quite thick. Black deserts was pretty long. Centiares was pretty long and negotiated with attorneys and got very involved. And, um, and so you had very sophisticated, um, buyers and developers on the other end of that, um, negotiating, um, what their developments should look like and how do you express that in the term of an agreement? So the exception to that, the states saying you can't, cities can't govern design guidelines is, well, you still can by agreement. If, if the people of that subdivision agree, whether it's being, whether it's in CCNRs or whether it's in a development agreement, there's an exception for a contract. And in the case of a development agreement, and really the case of CCNRs, who starts out forming the CCNRs? Who is that initial agreement with? The developers. And they're the, they are, they control that HOA for quite a while before, uh, there's enough who have bought into that subdivision that it eventually gets turned over to the homeowners. But that developer still controlled that development and how it looked in the end. It's the same thing with a development agreement. But the development agreement, I guess, we don't get involved in CCNRs and, and, um, the development agreement, the city does get involved in because we're the other party to that contract. I would prefer that everybody just had CCNRs and then, um, Mike and I could spend all of our free time doing other things. Then, then worrying about enforcing the terms of development agreements. And you're exactly right. Some people will say, we want our rights over here, but as soon as somebody does something I don't, I don't like over here, city, where are you? And I say, why don't you pool together and hire a civil attorney and take care of it yourselves? That's a private civil matter. They go, what? We want the city to do it for us. No. That's not, that's not for the city to do in, in many cases, even with development agreements, but certainly with CCNRs, we don't get involved in enforcing those. Yet, everybody wants the city to get involved in enforcing. They don't like the city to be involved in the front end of telling them what to do. But by golly, when somebody they think violates it, they want the- But by golly, when somebody they think violates it, they want the city on the back end enforcing it so that they don't have to hire an attorney. And that's the, that's the awkward spot that the city finds itself.
Thank you, Dale. I, I like your point that the people agree and when I, when I think about the subdivision, you're like, well, I wasn't there when the developer set up this contract with the city, I wasn't there when they first started, but I chose to move into that subdivision. So I did necess, you know, essentially agree with the development agreement whenever I move in.
You have, you have to go by CCNRs, it's there, still.
It's there, it's there. And so Commissioner Guardiola brought up the point that if we table this and let the public come in and give us comment about the item, to what, to what end? The, the agreement is with a single person, a single applicant and the city, correct? And that person, that developer is gonna make an agreement with the city and then that group of people that move into that subdivision will agree to live there or not. So I, I, I love the comment that we've had tonight, but I don't know why we would extend this, why we need to expand and, and drag this out more than it has been. Bob is not here, how come he's, his voice, his voice is in my head.
I'll speak for him.
And Lance is in my head. And there's been so much really good comment about all of this and how it's really nice to have control and agreement with everyone. And I, I don't want to hire a civil attorney either.
I got one.
I, I think that, I think that we're, the three of us at least are in agreement with the removal and recommendation of removal of LRV from, from this document for the future development agreements that may come up. Commissioner Robinson first.
Actually, he had one first, sorry.
Okay, let me make a quick comment. I think the, the big problem is we're trying to quantify an unquantifiable metric. Okay? And what is the metric? The metric is that home colors should blend with our natural environment. That is an unqualifiable metric. And so we have generated, we tried to do it with LRV, it does not, it does not match well. And so let's just drop that one little section B and say that, you know what, we still want to have the color matching with the natural environment. And so if someone goes purple, then we're probably gonna say something. Color intensity and brightness, maybe we can get some things there, but the metric was not quantifiable and therefore we're kidding ourselves by doing it and we're gonna make some people very unhappy and, I don't think we're solving the problem with it. It was, it was a, a reach and it didn't work. So let's say it didn't work and let's get rid of it and keep going with, the rest of it's fine. The rest of it's good, we should, we should be trying to do that. It's a color palette, maybe that's what each HOA is gonna do, that's what we did in ours.
Here's your choices.
Here's the palette, here's your choices. If you don't like here, move down the street. So.
Commissioner Robinson.
To Dale's comment that I, that I, I think I get frustrated with is you, you use the term that it's the developer's choice. But you're laying out a document in front of them saying, this is kind of what we want you to go by, but let's talk about it. You know what I mean? So that even being in that document guides it to this is what we're gonna do. If that's out of the document, they can still choose colors if they want to choose colors, that's their deal, but we're not implying what those colors are to be anymore. Because it feels to me like we are really not allowing, I mean, it's, I mean, it's like holding a, 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 somebody's bank checkbook over the top of their head and asking them to make a decision.
Well, the, the draft and it's, and it's just a draft, it's not, you make it sound like it's a piece of paper with a hammer hidden behind it.
Well, that's, that's what you're laying in front of somebody, that, that's, this is, this is our common agreement.
It's a piece of paper that says draft.
To the same extent you said to, that they have to go to an attorney to draft up their own and do all that kind of stuff, well, that's basically what you're saying is, is if they want to change this, they're gonna have to end up spending money.
No, I'm not saying that at all. And, and the term is design guidelines. It never says exterior colors in that document. It just says design guidelines. There are a lot of design guidelines.
And I get that, yeah.
You know, there's the architectural features around a house. I can make the document a whole lot thicker by listing every single design guideline.
And nail it to them, right?
No, there's no hammer there. Maybe, maybe what I should do is break out some of those main categories and say, such as these areas and then let them say, well, I, I don't mind this and this, but I don't like this. I have no objection to, to doing that and going forward.
This is in your free time, Dale?
Yeah.
Well, it, it don't take much longer to, you know, once you create just kind of a form that you start with. And I can spell it out to where they can, they can say, you know, we can take some of those main headings within a design guideline chapter and just say, are any of those objectionable to you?
Okay, Commissioner Guardiola.
My opinion about LRV, I'm flowing like water here. I still go back to the larger issue in section nine, one nineteen, one oh three, sub-paragraph five says, "Exterior building colors that respect and enhance the natural tones of southern Utah environment shall be used." And then I also read, Mr. Cullum, in those minutes, that you defined items A, C, and D as subjective and B as objective. So if we take out LRV, and again, I'm flowing like water here, do we still not have the same constraints with items A, B, and D, which is, shall be used?
Right.
Well, if you're still gonna have a limitation on building color, why don't we just eliminate all the sub-paragraphs and just leave it like it's a statement from the general plan, which, where, is, but the general plan is not an ordinance, it is not a binding document that we enforce, it's just a vision. The, the binding document is the zoning ordinance. If you don't like the restriction on exterior colors and you want to just follow the vision, then you remove the section, as has been suggested, and you just follow the visionary document. There is no further guideline by the zoning ordinance.
And I'm not suggesting that we remove sub-paragraph five. I'm saying if we're taking off one leg of a four-legged stool, have we in fact changed the purpose of the stool?
Three-legged stools are more sturdy anyway.
Well, not if you have a fourth corner, isn't it?
Commissioner Clifford?
I have an, I have an idea.
Please.
I think we should drop light reflective value, but still ask the question and have in the development agreement that the developer has to address the building colors to, and have some, something that he agrees in his development that he's going to have in there that's going to have that the new colors are gonna blend with the natural environment. Force it as part of the agreement, that they have to have it in the agreement. It can't be, it can't be left out. And they make their own, we got to negotiate, right? We're gonna negotiate, we're gonna make our own, here's our, here's my plan, we're my subdivision to meet this requirement that we're gonna blend with the natural environment of the city. And he makes his own rules. And it's in the agreement, it's binding, you can come back. And Mike can go after him if he doesn't do it. And we've agreed that it does meet the, the general.
General plan?
General plan.
And items in five.
And are those defined by LRV or?
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say, how's he going to define that?
But how's, how's he going to define?
Yeah, how does, how does Mike define that?
He gives a color palette, I don't know. Give him some, give him some ideas, I don't know.
That's what we're trying to get rid of.
Mike, help us out.
We are somewhat doing that on pre-app approvals now. When we do the planner view, they bring in the palette.
Yeah.
And so we're able to see, rather than enforcement after the fact, we're trying to enforce the ordinance at planner view rather than having to make the decision at, at the end. And I've even told the contractors who are the biggest squeakers to say, hey, if it, if, if you're not complying with the ordinance, maybe you have to have the block on site when we show up to do the stucco inspection to make sure it complies with what you agreed with at, at, at the building permit stage. So we are somewhat doing what you're saying is, we're looking at a plat, but we're comparing it to this ordinance rather than a development agreement color that the contractor likes. Is, I, I believe that's what you're suggesting.
Yeah, I'm just suggesting that they have to negotiate with the city to, to show you that the plat, the palette that they're going to use, the palettes for their subdivision enhance the natural environment of Ivans. And if you agree that, then that's their, it doesn't say LRV, it doesn't say anything, this is their palette. If they want LRV, I don't know, they can choose. If they want to use LRV, let them choose it, that's their subdivision.
And I think somewhat how, how we've been explained to, they, they can do that without changing the wording at all. They can, they can tell us in the development agreement exactly.
But this says, everybody has to do it. Everybody's gotta do the LRV. So let's say it doesn't. Let's just say you gotta come up with a plan that, that we all agree to, that's your way of meeting that objective for the city and our community. And then they gotta live with it, just like we do with CCNRs and an HOI, and HOA. We all come up with a set of rules when we write them the first time that we're all gonna live by. And once we get them, we're bound by them. And everybody that buys in there is bound by them. So I think we do the same thing here, just say, okay, it's an agreement, we're gonna negotiate it. Color is a bit, is an issue and how, how are you gonna address it? You make the rules and then we'll enforce them.
So, Mr. Chair, what I hear is we just have, we add a little sub-paragraph that say, "Exterior colors developer shall provide the building official with a palette of colors that..."
It follows the first talk, the first, the first, under B, it says, "Color of all exterior buildings shall be blended with the proposed buildings and natural environment of the city."
Right, okay. Okay, then that's easy.
And LRV.
And, and, and remove LRV.
Yeah, that's easy to do.
You think Bob would like that?
I think Bob would be enjoying himself right now. If, if that's the point, then let's, let's do a recommendation to the, to the city, a, a motion for that.
Okay. I, I recommend that we provide, or we change the...
It's a motion, you move?
I move. I move that we change item C, no, B, excuse me, item B, and allow the developer to develop, allow the developer to, what's the word I want to use?
Provide.
Provide a set of colors for the city that allow, that blend with the natural environment.
And?
I don't think that's quite.
Is that okay? It was kind of rough, wasn't it?
And remove LRV.
And, yeah, he's, he moved.
Remove, yeah, remove LRV as a measure. If they want, and they can choose to use it. Well, it's their choice.
You want that all in, in the motion?
If they want.
Well, some developer may decide that's what he wants to do, so they may choose to do it, but they...
But that's the point, we're trying to make this their choice and not be a force. So LRV needs to be a gone thing.
Yeah.
And then layer choice. So do we want to redo that?
We need to redo that because that motion went down this, down, down the river. So there needs to be a new succinct motion on what we would like to represent to the city council.
Yeah, what should it be?
I move that on line B, we remove light reflective value as a material, as a measurement value.
And?
And?
Require developers to...
Require developers to?
I'm helping you.
Okay, we got, hold on. Because A, A covers it, is the problem. It's almost like we need to eliminate B, just eliminate B.
Yeah, element, the, the first talk, the first paragraph under five talks about the requirement to blend in the area, but perhaps we should write into that that there needs to be a palette presented by the developer to...
Okay, here we go again. We're ready for that.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Robinson.
This was a proposal, what?
It's, we, we move.
We move.
To recommend.
We move to, we move to recommend that item B, LRV be removed completely and that we, the general developer would be required to provide a color palette.
That aligns with?
That aligns with the?
That, that aligns with Ivans, what is it?
Natural tones of?
At, Ivans' natural tones.
The natural environment of the city.
Natural environment, that's what it is, natural environment of the city, thank you. Did we get that?
Do we have, do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Robinson.
Is that champagne popping?
Seconded by Commissioner Clifford
For me, too.
To recommend LRV to the city council as stipulated. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Commissioner Guardiola?
Before I vote, I want to just say one thing.
Please.
And that is, I remember sitting in the planning commission meeting when Cody said he needed something with some teeth. So what we've done is just taken the teeth out of the, and we've heard tonight three different inspectors and it was variable. And so it seems to me we've gone back to that, but I will vote in favor of the motion. But I think we have not solved the problem.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving to item three G, discuss land use, zoning map, and general plan amendments. Mike, you're back up.
Glad to wake him up.
Yes, so I provided you with two sheets. It's, it's things that I've, I had brought up a couple of weeks ago. Just finished working on them today. So I, I thought I'd give them to you now so you could start looking at them and maybe we could discuss some of it tonight, but if, if you need time to look at it for a couple of weeks, then I, I think that that may be a good asterisk on one page. And then second, maybe a good way to divide up commercial into two different aspects. One, a resort leaning zone or land use and one more of a, a commercial land use. So I'm not, I think that that's just starting points with me to give to you to think about. And hopefully, as we talk to citizens, get input that this may be something easier for developers when they come in. They can either look at the resort areas or they can look at commercial areas. And then, like I said, the asterisk is something that we've been talking about since day one. And it would clarify on the zoning map, on the top right is where those would fit in. On the RA five and the RA one, it would basically say, "See land use map." And so when somebody buys a people, a piece of property, they could say, okay, I've got an RA five behind me, let me go look at the land use map and see where our intentions are for the land behind me. And so I repeated that note for the bottom of the same table and it's a little bit more detailed, telling people what our process is. Is that we can either do a concurrent or we can do just a zone change. That, that is the process, but if you look at the land use map, that is the direction we would like to go. And so hopefully by the time we're done, we won't get any concurrent land use requirements because we've done such a great job at amending this land use plan that everybody loves what we did, so.
You're, you're living in a world that I don't know about, so.
Everybody agrees.
Everybody agrees, I, I don't know what that is.
Um, I leave it up to you guys for your suggestions. I think I've given all mine throughout the last few weeks and I'll sit down and listen. Unless you have questions.
Of course.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike. Did you look through?
Thank you, Mike. Um, did you look through the map he sent to us?
Yeah.
Some, and we talked about, Commissioner Clifford?
I, I think the, I think the maps is, is very well done and I think it, it really does express a vision, a vision for the city that would lead to, uh, like some consistent areas of different types of, of land, of, of use. From low density, medium, high, commercial. I mean, all the pieces are there, but I say it's not cast in concrete because people have the right to come and make a proposal for almost anything if they, they want to, but, but that's a vision. I think it captures the vision of what the community would be like based on, I think you based it on the transportation map and, uh, important corridors and and existing areas which are already pretty well entrenched in, in what they're, what they're going to be. Yeah. So, yeah, I thought it was good.
I agree with that. I, I think that we're actually to the point where we need to get more public involvement and as Commissioner Guardiola has talked about the public hearings and, and open houses and elements where we can get more input, uh, so we can make a better and wiser decision. So I really like this, Mike. This is a really good idea that we had talked about, you know, making larger, you know, areas with subsections that help us understand what would work better in those places. And I think that the, the community really would be invested in items like this so they can tell us what they want to use in different places.
I like it. I, I agree with you. I think we need to go to, we need to get this for the public now.
Yeah.
I think that's where we're at.
It's a good idea, Commissioner Guardiola. Thank you.
Great minds think a lot.
All right, then we just recommend. So we have a three-week break, I believe, in between.
Do we?
And I don't know if we want to do multiple nights for different areas. Um, yeah. So just at your guidance, who, if you want two commissioners, two councilmen, you know, we could talk with the mayor and see what his suggestions are. Just that we don't have a quorum at any one meeting. Right. But, uh, um, maybe different commissioners at different meetings and different, um, councilmen at different meetings. So, um, we're ready to schedule when you guys are ready to direct.
Sure.
Commissioner Robinson?
Uh, so would we plan on, even though we divided into different areas of the city, would we have them all meet here or would we try to do something within the community or, I, I, what do you think?
I, I'm all ears. It'd probably be easier to come here since they can.
We're going to showcase our new building.
I, uh, the building is wonderful. I would suggest if there is a way that we can hold it in a neighborhood. My experience has been you bring out different people than you would if you come to this building. It's a tiny community, but nonetheless, uh, my experience in the past has been neighborhood meetings. You get higher participation and you bring out a broader range of people who wouldn't normally attend. I don't know if we have that many facilities where we could do that. What, what was done in the past is we held them at schools.
We have one.
One. Two.
Two schools, you're right. So I, I like the idea of getting in and with the people, but I don't know if there's a, a buildings other than LDS churches that are big enough for, for those, uh, gatherings. School definitely has that size, but, uh, I don't know. Yeah, we're getting warm enough. They could even be outside of the park. Very good point. If we're a little bit longer, we'll be in the summertime. So, okay. So I, I won't be able to attend as a chair commissioner, but, uh, the, the three of you can assign Bob to go and, uh. I think Commissioner Guardiola would be an excellent choice, but, uh, she has a lot invested in that and has put a lot of time into this, so. Not that I'm giving.
Excellent choice of what?
To, to, to be one of the two commissioners at these.
I would be happy to.
At gatherings. Okay. So you, you guys can, uh, rock, paper, scissors for, for the other position.
Or you can have go in different ones.
Yes, of course.
You don't have the same people on each one.
Then we'll look at the schedule and, and get it scheduled.
Have a sign up.
And we'll, uh, let everybody know the best we can and all medias that are possible. Thank you, Mike. Uh, then moving to item three H, discussing, consider approval of the Ivan City Planning Commission meeting minutes for March first, two thousand twenty-two. I didn't see it on my.
Minutes?
Email.
Oh, you didn't, you didn't look on Friday. I mean, you did look on Friday.
I did look on Friday.
I didn't, I didn't.
Yeah, I saw it.
I'm assuming that she's perfect and that she.
Mr. Chair, there were a few typos, but they were totally understandable and I would recommend approval of the minutes.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Guardiola and seconded by Commissioner Clifford to approve the Ivan City Planning Commission meeting minutes for March first, two thousand twenty-two. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Moving to item four, reports. Any reports, commissioners?
I do.
Sir.
We just, we're going to lose you.
That's a report?
That's a report. Well, thank you for your service and.
When, when is your date?
Today.
Today is it.
Today's your last.
We, we abused him good today too, don't you think?
The longest meeting in history. It's your last meeting.
No, we were just sad to see you go, that's why.
Um, Dale, there was, uh, I will, but, uh, but, uh, I would like to thank all of you specifically and personally for all of your help and all of your guidance. I mean, and the training by Dale is, uh, you guys are missing out. He, he helps.
It'll be next month.
Excellent. So, yeah, you, you don't get.
We're missing out.
He keeps us a lot out of, a lot of trouble and keeps us, uh, it was nice having Brian here, but it's, you know, one attorney is almost enough in one room. So. But, uh, thank you for all of your, all of your assistance and, and Mike even, you know, thank you for, for serving out here. So. Uh, yeah, it'll be mixed feelings, but my wife will be happy that I'm home sometimes. So, but, uh.
I bet.
Um, Mike, did you need to add to our meeting tonight?
I spent a lot of time preparing for tonight. So, uh, actually there was no TRC today. So, um, we had an influx and so now it's, uh, time to catch up. So I don't have any future items right now. There are a few things that I've been asked to do. Um, one person asked for me to start looking into home occupations. It was removed out of our, um, so I am working on that. I'm kind of letting us get through this process before I bring anything else forward. Um, maybe a couple of inconsistencies that, uh, to help clarify like we are on or are not doing on LRV.
Right.
Mike, you talked about wanting to be, uh, do something with the walls and that too. Are you still looking at doing?
Yeah, that's one of the places where we want to be a little bit more consistent on comprehension. Either if it's me not, um, interpreted as it was written or clarified.
So I'd love to be involved in that. I have way too much experience in it, unfortunately.
Yep, you, you will be involved.
Dale, anything else to add? Oh, you have any training coming up?
Well, there will be on the, on our future agenda in April when we get the new planning commissioner on board. Uh, just wanted to thank you for your years of service. Um, we won't have anybody to look at, um, the detailed plats and, and whether something was, a curve was called out correctly, um, or not.
We're in trouble. Yeah.
You better, your replacement has got to be just like you. You better find some.
You've been a tremendous asset and, uh, you'll be greatly missed, but, uh, enjoy your, your time off.
Thank you. Uh, I see Lance left, so we can't move to item five.
I move adjourned.
Okay.
I second.
Are those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Aye. Unanimously, right?
That's right.
Okay, very good.